Thank you, Mayor McBride and Councilors.
Okay, we are live.
Thank you, Mayor McBride and councilors for joining us evening or joining us early this evening for this discussion. The city's 2020 work plan identified the Rand Road development project as an opportunity to partner with a community to develop affordable and attainable deed and income restricted units to help meet Hood River's housing needs. At the time, the seven acre parcel at 780 Rand Road was purchased in early 2020. The city committed to development of at least 50 housing units for households earning at or below 120% of area median income. A consultant team led by Leland Consulting Group was selected to prepare a housing development strategy for the site, as well as to prepare requests for qualifications that will be used to solicit a developer. Led by Brian Vanaman of Leland in partnership with Darcy Vincent of DDB Consulting and Marcy McInnelli of Herb's Works. We have a group of extremely well qualified consultants for this project. When I spoke with you about your vision and goals for the development strategy in December, I understood you were interested in focusing on households earning at or below 80% area median income, that's AMI. Some housing on the site for 80 to 120% AMI resulting in a mix of rental units and below market rate owner occupied units at feasible, as well as integrating housing with parkland and open space, stormwater treatment facilities, transit in the surrounding neighborhood. Around the same time that I spoke with you last about the project, Brian and I met with several of the adjacent property owners, as well as representatives of Hood River County, Mid Columbia Housing Authority, Big River Community Land Trust, Nextdoor Incorporated, the Hood River Latino Network and the Aging in the Gorge Alliance. Mike Kettler of Integrity Building and Construction, who considered developing the site before the city purchased it, and Mike Kits also spent time sharing their thoughts with us. Since December, the consultant team has been working on development alternatives. Again, part of their role is to find the balance between what the city wants and what the nonprofit or private developers can feasibly provide. Tonight, Brian Vanaman and Darcy Vincent are joining us to share the preliminary development alternatives. We hope you'll point out anything that we have missed. In the coming weeks, staff will gather additional public feedback, including through the project website, and the consultant team will continue to refine the development alternatives. Brian also will be preparing a request for qualifications to developers that should be ready by the end of June. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Brian and Darcy.
Great, thank you, Kevin, and good evening, councilors. Thanks for being here. Kevin, I'm going to try to share my screen. I think that's, and we'll see how successful that is. Let's see. Oh, there we go. Yes. Looks like that'll work and.
Great, thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, okay, so Kevin, you can, we can see the screen, correct? Great, okay, yeah, so tonight, as Kevin mentioned, I'll be the primary presenter and I'm really glad to have Darcy Vincent here of DDB Consulting. My focus for a number of years has been on nearing the best of public and private development and particularly public land dispositions in which cities are attempting to achieve something more than the market would provide on its own, and Darcy is an expert in affordable housing finance, so she's been a great member of this team. So I also would say that we anticipate posting a version of this presentation, some versions of this presentation on the city's website, and so that's why you'll see some information that I think you're very familiar with here. The first is the policy context and the state of affordable housing affordability in the city of Hood River. And you can see for households that are below 100% AMI that the percent of housing that those households can afford in the city of Hood River is dropping, expected to drop precipitously both in the last decade and then in the coming years for people like construction workers, nurses, police officers, dental assistants and others. So fundamentally, this is part of the issue that we view this project trying to address. The city, as you know well, purchased the 780 Rand Road site in 2020. It is about seven acres, just a little over seven acres, and is located here on Rand. One of the things I think, I think there's a couple really wonderful things about this site. One is it's quite lovely and there's great views to the north. Also, as it builds out, I think one thing, a couple of things that are, that are great attributes for it are its access quite close to Cascade into the improved intersection that we know is planned for Cascade and Rand, and then also the many, many commercial services that are available within a short walk or drive from the site, groceries and many other things. So whether the housing's affordable or market rate, you know, this is a a lot of services in the area, and I think that makes it a great place to develop, particularly for affordable housing. As Kevin mentioned, he and others met with you in December and we tried to distill what you conveyed to him down to some, some simple goals for the site or, and we think these are really important. We anticipate showing these or some form of these to developers. Partially because, as I'll say a couple of times during this presentation, we'll show you site development options, but our expectation is that what developers ultimately build for the city of Hood River will be different from what we will show you tonight. But what should remain consistent is that they're always trying to deliver on these goals. So in some ways, they're the most important things, but so we, we understand that the primary objective is below 80% AMI housing. We presume that's rental. That's consistent with our experience. If possible, a range of incomes between 80 and 120% AMI. Possible mix of rental and owner occupied housing, range of housing types, good design and quality. And then we grouped these as additional goals because they're not directly housing related, but we, we know these things are important to you. Integration of park and open space, excuse me, integration of wetlands, stormwater detention in the site, transit service or proximity transit service if possible. Making Rand Road and the Crossing on Rand safe, integrating energy efficiency measures, weaving, and I think the last two are about bigger things like weaving the site into the surrounding neighborhood and making it more than just a housing site, something that's has multiple attributes and is a place. So that's a summary of the goal. So now diving into the site. Here it is, again, a little over seven acres. And the first thing I'll mention is you can see that the topographical lines, the bold lines are in units of 10, 10 feet. So you can see that the north side of the site is the most steep. Actually, the southeast is pretty steep as well, and the south is steep with kind of a flatter part in the middle. We have a preliminary wetland determination by, that was conducted for this city, showing this wetland area that's about 0.2 acres. And then heritage trees shown in, in the dark green on the site, and then we've dashed in what could be a future Wine Country Avenue extension across the site. This, this road is dashed in, does not have to be in that location. It can move around. Most of the alternatives that we'll show you tonight have it there because at least for now, we think that makes sense as a location. It creates a four way intersection at Rand and Sierra. And it steers clear of the wetlands that are to the south and the slopes that are to the north, but certainly it could change. So those are some site assumptions and topography. In the middle of the site, in here, we've wanted to integrate that wetland park and stormwater features. They're all green. They're all dealing with water to some extent, so we've seen good examples of that and think that that can be a place for, for greenery and recreation and playing. So that's something we've brought in the middle of the site. As you'll see, here's the slopes again. We've got slopes of over 10%, 10 to 15% on the north side, 5 to 10% on the south side and 0 to 5% in the middle. And as I'll talk about throughout this, the slope has been one factor that we've thought about in designing the site. One, one thing to note is that it's typically more expensive to build on a sloped site, so as I'll show later, we've concentrated the rental housing in the, in the less sloped middle of the site, for example. So the site is currently zoned largely R1 with a little bit of R3. And we are assuming that in order to realize the alternatives we'll show tonight, that some sort of rezoning would need to occur either to R3, which is seems to be the most likely, or possibly to some other zone, although R3 seems to be most likely. We did want to think about the full range of housing types here. This is by Herb's Works, who's our designer for the site, and they're, one of their focuses is on middle housing throughout the state. So I'll show you some site plans in a second and, and again, as I, as I said before, one of our principles for rental apartments was to locate them somewhere in the, in the middle and flat parts of the site. What we've, what I'm sure Darcy already knew and I've learned more during this process is that these projects, you know, it doesn't, shouldn't come as too much of a surprise, but because they're always looking to save money where possible, they often don't have dollars for, to, to pay for extraordinary site improvements such as on slope sites. And also some of the funding, grant funding sources that come via the state cannot pay or can only pay for a limited amount of, of site infrastructure and site development costs. So again, that's why we've located, generally located the rental apartments on the flatter middle part of the site. And these are some affordable rental projects here, and they're represented in blue on the site plans that I'll show in a few seconds. And then as for attached and detached homes, which we assume are owner occupied, we've located those on the more sloped parts of the site. Here are some examples. And those are represented in purple in the site drawings I'll show. And then, and then for Wine Country Avenue, our understanding is that the, the, either the TSP or the transportation planning that's, that's ongoing in the city will call for this, this street, again, wherever it is, to be a neighborhood connector street. And this is the typical neighborhood connector right of way. One of the things we've talked about and would definitely support would be having a bike lane somewhere on the north side of the site, which is the uphill side of the site. And then going south, there could be a shareo, shared lane, so bikes are traveling in the travel lane. So that's approximately what we anticipate this road would look like. So here's alternative one. And so the, you can see some of the common elements I've already talked about, Wine Country Avenue, wetlands, park space, stormwater management here. And then in the blue is affordable rental housing. I'll talk more about this, but we've got four buildings here totaling approximately 100 units. And then in, in detached units on the north and then rowhouse on the south, we've got owner occupied. And again, our thinking there was just that if you imagine this, this larger building trying to put it on a steeply sloped site, we're just talking about more retaining walls, more concrete, more, more building up and more earthwork and trying to kind of get a level pad for one of these larger apartment buildings. And these owner occupied units are kind of more nimble, more able to be fit into sloped areas. So here we've got about 25 owner occupied units, both mostly detached with some attached. We've also, I don't think I mentioned this earlier, we've dashed in the West Side Community Trail here. Crossing presumably it ran there. And then alternative two. We, we, one of the things we wanted to look at here is, sorry, there's, there's, we've, we've got in the blue, the rental housing, it's about the same, it's the same number of units. And we wanted to look at a different site configuration, possibly fronting this park with, with rental housing. And then see if we could fit in more attached units, which we've done here. So this totals about 45, 46 units of attached housing. We presume these would be smaller units. And again, they're clustered on the more sloped parts of the site. The gray in both of these is, is parking. And for that reason, the staff prefers alternative one to two, among other reasons, which we can go over later. So I'm going to talk briefly about some affordable housing finance principles. This is very simple, but just for starters. One of the things I just want to remind people is that building housing is, is expensive unfortunately and consists of a bunch of different costs. Profit, land, site improvement, soft costs, which include many things, hard costs. And when either nonprofit or for profit builders are building affordable housing, typically the value of those homes when sold or rented is less than the cost to build them. And that's why we need some sort of gap financing to make that financially feasible for a developer. So go looking specifically at the affordable apartments. These, this, this and the next slide lists some of our assumptions. We know that the low income housing tax credit program is the primary source, funding source for affordable housing, I believe nationwide, but certainly in the state of Oregon. And there's two typical, there's two light tech programs, the 4% tax rest and the 9% tax credits. We're recommending the 4% tax credit program here. And some of the details for that program are that the average affordability of this rental project would be 60% AMI or less. So one of the things that means is that you could have, you could have a mix of affordability levels in this rental project, housing project. So for example, if some are 40% AMI, you may have some others that are 80% AMI, and they all average out to be 60, under 60% AMI, or they could all be 60% AMI. That, that's the requirement. Typically, 4% tax credits provide about 30% of the project costs. Obviously, that depends on how much the project costs. And one of the things that, that, that we, we found through this project and this analysis is that we, we believe that this, this project at Rand Road needs to be 100 units, potentially more in order to be financially feasible. If it drops below that, then actually the rents that, that are, there's not enough units to, to create some of the revenue that's needed for the project to be financially feasible while you still have a lot of fixed costs of development. And Darcy can speak more to that, but that's why you see 100 unit project in the first two or 100 units in variety of buildings in the first two alternatives. The 4% tax credit is not a competitive process. The state allocates the money if the, if the project is financially feasible. And that's, that's important because we know that some other project applications have been made in Hood River County seeking 9% tax credits, which do provide more equity funding, but, but also face a series of selection criteria that we think will make it tough for a project here to, to win. There's also the lift program from the state, which we've assumed this project also wins lift funding in pairs well with a 4%. So the kind of capital stack, as we think about it, of the series of investment subsidies that, that would be going into this project are, as I mentioned, 4% tax credits, lift funds, a property tax abatement, which could be either adopted via city ordinance or could be, could be ordered via the housing authority involvement, in which case a city ordinance probably would not be, need to be adopted. A city land write down, which essentially means selling the land for little to no value. We're assuming that the city would pay some of the SDCs being water, sewer and stormwater. And that the parks SDCs would either also be either paid or waived by the city. Let me speak more about that. And then also, we're assuming some CET funds either from the city or the county. And then we're also making, we're also assuming that the developers make, for the affordable housing project, are making little or no expenditure on the primary site infrastructure. I'll talk about what that is in alternatives one or two, and we're assuming a rezone. So the owner occupied homes. These are a mix, obviously of detachment, attached house and units ranging from 800 to 1600 square feet with the primary target being 80 to 100% AMI. Some could go up to 120% particularly if they're, they're larger homes. Or if they're extremely expensive to develop due to slope or some other condition. We definitely assume that when the city sells this, that there would be a covenant requiring the developer to retain those homes as affordable for, for some amount of time, although there is complexity when homes are resold. And certainly instruments like the Community Land Trust enable long-term affordability and kind of address the problem of resales and how, how the city would ensure that those resales are also affordable. So here we're assuming a, a shorter list of investments or assumptions. Those are that the city writes the land down, in other words, reduces the, the sale price, transfer price to very little. And that the developer here, we also don't see the developer, this, these projects being able to pay for a significant amount of the primary site infrastructure. The reason being that if they do spend a lot of money on the site infrastructure, they then need to charge the future homeowners that amount in order to not lose money. So here is the primary site infrastructure. And obviously, it's conceptual in terms of, this isn't, these are not engineering drawings, but we've got Wine Country that we've looked at, the intersection at Rand. We are, we, we are hoping that there are not improvements that are necessary to a culvert that goes under Rand, but that is something that will, we've looked at. And a series of frontage improvements on Rand, essentially sidewalk, planter strip, those sorts of things. The West Side Trail here and the West Side Truck Crossing and then a park and an open space. So because of all this, one of the alternatives that, that we've, we've discussed and that we've proposed for consideration is alternative three. And so in this alternative, we've, we've said, okay, what if basically some or all of the owner occupied units, those being the, the purple units become market rate, they're, they're not affordable, they're essentially whatever the market can bear. The reason that, that this is worth considering, at least in my view, is is that the economics of that would enable that a developer of the, of the whole site to, to pay for the, the primary site infrastructure, mostly or largely pay for this, this primary site infrastructure. Basically, the city would likely still sell the land for little to nothing, but in exchange for not paying for the land, the developer would build the strike side infrastructure that I've shown on the previous slide. So there obviously are benefits, potentially and drawbacks to this. The, the middle income ownership housing probably is eliminated from this site plan, but, but there's, there's less of a question about how to fund the, the site infrastructure. So the last alternative that I'll talk about involves the, both the city, the city's site and Hood River County site, which is a little less than 1,000 feet to the west, probably about 5, 6, 700 feet to the west. It's about a two acre site. And the, the county's goal with this property is to, to enable affordable housing as well. So we have talked, as Kevin said, to the county about somehow integrating these two sites. So alternative four, our assumption there is that both the city and county properties are made available for development concurrently. That the county property is available for owner occupied housing. That, that all the purple owner occupied housing, both on the city's property and the county's property, they are a mix of market rate and workforce or 80 to 120% AMI housing, but the majority or possibly the, the large majority would be market rate housing, but you would still have some middle income or workforce owner occupied housing. The city and county would both write down the land value. And in this one as well, the inclusion of market rate housing would enable developers to pay for most or all of the primary site infrastructure. I should also say, kind of going back, that, that it is possible that particularly in the current grant funding environment that we have from the local to the federal level, that, that the city could secure grant funds for some of the the site infrastructure. So hopefully those alternatives are, are clear and happy to go back and kind of explain them. But the staff recommendation at, at this point is a recommendation of alternative four. And they've stated, and I agree, that I think the wonderful thing about this alternative is that it includes affordable rental, workforce owner occupied and market rate owner occupied housing, all of which are needed, all of which the city's housing needs analyses have shown are, are needed in the city. And it moves the primary infrastructure responsibility to the developer. Again, because, because the market rate housing creates the capacity for developers to pay for land or infrastructure, potentially both. And so that's, this point, the recommended alternative. Staff has also said that alternative one is acceptable. That's, staff likes that site plan better. And also, obviously, it includes a significant amount of affordable rental and workforce owner occupied housing. And hopefully, the city could secure. And hopefully, the city could secure grant funds for some or potentially all of the of the primary site infrastructure. Or pay for that site infrastructure through systems development fee in credits or or other sources, CET funds that are that are not expended on the site itself. So the developer RFQ request for qualifications or solicitation, both the staff and our recommendation is that we would actually show all of these alternatives in the developer request for qualifications, identify alternative four as recommended. And the reason to show multiple alternatives is for one, to show our thought process and show your thoughts process. But also because again, we 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 don't believe, I don't believe that developers will build exactly what we've shown. Our hope was we're we're giving them and you information about expectations and 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 due diligence on the site. But by showing multiple alternatives, we send a message that there's not one right answer, you must build this. But rather, there's a range of of alternatives, and we're encouraging their creativity to take pieces of what we show, propose alternatives of their own, etc. To just recap where we are in 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 this process. We're working on the housing development strategy now, and we'll be preparing a developer request for qualifications in June and the coming months. And our next steps are, as Kevin mentioned, to solicit public input by putting this information on the city's website, working with the county and other key stakeholders. And then in the summer, release the request for qualifications, potentially to prepare for rezoning at that time. In any case, as I said, we do anticipate the site would need to be rezoned. And then in subsequent phases, after you receive submittals from developers, you would select the preferred developer, negotiate an agreement or agreements to put various requirements on them for what they need to deliver. And it also, as we talked about, could include city roles and responsibilities, whether that's specific infrastructure pieces or rezoning or other things that I'm not thinking of right now. And then after you have an agreement in place and and the proper zoning, the developer or developers then build finance operates the project. And we've just prepared this as well, just to remind everybody, including ourselves, that that this project will come into focus over time. And I've I've worked on projects where the alternatives we came up with during the planning stage are remarkably similar to what's ultimately built and 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 not. But we're 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 trying to provide people with concepts to react to. So that's that's our presentation for this evening. And we we've outlined development alternatives and the next steps and and wanted to ask you if there are other issues to address, questions, comments, etc. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. That was a great presentation. Wow. You guys delved deep into the financial part of it, it looks like, quite a bit, figuring out what what would, what could happen. So, thank you. I'm sure counselors probably have some questions. Megan?
Yeah, Brian, could you clarify, when you, we have these different alternatives, is the alternative, like, are we giving the the number of units? Is that what the alternative is, or the location where the units are, is that what the alternative is, or the like, if it's detached or detached? Like, what what are we actually, if we show these alternatives to folks, what are we saying we want out of them? Which aspect of it?
I I would say all of the above. Again, if I go back to, in my view, the goals are the most important, really, because when you so we'll we'll prepare a developer solicitation. What that'll say is, you know, the city has a seven acre site. The the priority is rental housing at eighty percent below the potential for owner occupied workforce housing, etc., etc. Then provide different alternatives. Those alternatives, I think, would have a design component, you know, how what the site layout is, where the units are, and also what I think of as a deal structure component, which is, you know, based on this site layout, we're anticipating that you developer would need to secure long term housing tax credits. The city would likely provide, the city or county would likely provide, see some CET dollars. So I I I guess it would include all of those things. Does that answer your question?
Oh, I guess a little bit. I mean, so based on alternatives you've given, we have basically declared where the roads will go, where the park will go. The developer wouldn't be choosing that.
Good question. Okay, no. No, I would expect, so let me go back. So the way that I've done this before is we would show these alternatives, but also tell developers that basically as long as you meet the city's goals and as long, and and we actually could be probably more specific about those, for example, at this point, you know, I think that we feel pretty strongly that a hundred units of rental housing ought to be either a goal or, you know, a target. And because we we don't see how this project works without that, but no, we we would, we would show the alternatives kind of to be educational for developers. Because from their point of view, and from my point of view, these kind of site plans are really helpful. If you just look at an aerial, it's hard to get a sense of, well, how how big is a sixty foot wide, seventy foot wide right away here? How how where would where would units fit? But we would show these alternatives, but if a developer came in and, you know, honestly, counselor, we've talked about the road kind of coming down here, for example, or the road coming to the north. And if they, after as you go through the developer selection process, we'd want them to give you more information about their view on the site and how they would build it out. And as long as they meet the base expectations of providing X units of affordable housing, you know, having integrated stormwater design, including the West Side Trail, etc. Personally, I would say, you know, you can let them rearrange the pieces the way they they think is best. These are these are educational alternatives.
Others have questions? Jessica and then Eric.
Thank you. I wasn't clear, what's the the big benefit between alternative three and alternative four? Is it that we would be able to include more eighty to one hundred twenty percent homes if we did alternative four?
That's correct. Yes, by by bringing in the the county's land, you can do all three of the of these housing types that I've talked about, you can, yeah, and you can do some of the middle income and market rates.
Eric?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Brian. Let me just say, out of the gate, I was just so excited to receive this report. It seems so thoughtful and your your three alternatives, your four alternatives certainly have me excited about this. So thank you. I have three kind of bite sized questions. Maybe I can just throw them at you and you can respond to the three of them. First, the intersection of Sierra and Rand is hilly. I'm wondering if you think we might have to have a signal there or kind of what's your vision for that intersection because it's so hilly? Secondly, if we have the county property, I couldn't quite tell from your diagram if if there's going to be a sort of an east west connector. Now, will the projects be physically connected by a road? Are we going to go over that Von Foto property? I just couldn't tell if if they're going to be disjointed or jointed. And then thirdly, you mentioned the wetland issue. I wondered if you have a sense of how wet is wet? Are we talking about like a swamp with mosquitoes or or just wet grass? And I want to get a sense of what this park will be and how wet it will be or not be. Your pictures were beautiful, but I I just wanted to align your beautiful pictures with what might be a wetter area to facilitate something like that.
Okay, the first. So the first, the first question of Wine Country Avenue and Rand, this is the intersection you're asking about, correct? Yeah. So what we've been talking about recently is a a stop sign at on Wine Country Ave here, a crosswalk, potentially striped crosswalks across Rand. We've talked about, but not really. I I don't think gotten really specific about potentially like median refuges that would allow, you know, kind of a two stage crossing. We have not, we've talked about, but but my understanding is that a signal would not be required. That would be significantly more expensive. And Kevin may be able to say more about that, but there may also be kind of curvature leveling, kind of a lot of earthwork required in a in a signalized intersection as well. From an engineering point of view, because then the cars are slowing down, stopping, etc. So, Kevin.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Counselor Haney. I would agree with that. Counselor Haney, at this point, things being somewhat conceptual, we have the direction we've given to Brian is is to not anticipate a signalized intersection at that location. But presumably, associated with a development proposal, we would see a traffic impact analysis. Traffic engineer would look at issues like site distance, speeds, and maybe make some recommendations for something that we're not thinking about at this time. But again, at the moment, not looking at a signal at that location.
The second issue raised is 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 how do these two properties relate to each other? Is there, are they connected? And the answer there is another resounding, we don't know, no. The no, we we, not to be flippant, we have, we have looked, we have talked about that, looked into it and thought about it quite a lot. The we we know that the the Von Floto family is actively planning their properties here. But we also don't have, you know, a final understanding of of their preferred site layout. You you can see here, what you see here is the way that the site site was plotted by the Von Floto family some years ago. But we we don't know if basically, they've they've looked at other alternatives. The intent at that time was that this would be, these would be roads. But they have since looked at at various other ways to lay out the site and and so we don't know exactly where the road would be. We've taken a cue from that by by running Wine Country Avenue straight across here. And and the other thing I didn't mention is, you know, this is really the flattest part of Rand where we've connected to, so we do like that connection. But we do think there's a benefit to thinking about these properties together. And the county's property could ultimately be connected to the city's property, or it could just take access off of Mount Adams this way. But that's something we want to keep talking to the county about. And then the your question about the 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 park and the wetlands. It's been, I was last on the site in December. And, you know, at that what we've intent, what we've tried to show, you can see the wetland here. So there is still room to have, you know, sites that are that are that are not wet and are raised out of the wetlands near the road or or over here. That's one of the things I'd like to, we do have some time to kind of refine these in the next month or two. And I would like to have the designers give some more careful thought to to this area, how big it is, help you get a sense of scale. But there's 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 space here to, you know, have some green areas that are not swamps. But it's it's not a, it's not a huge area. Again, this this wetland area is about a quarter of an acre. So, you know, this is also about a quarter of an acre.
Mark?
Yeah, thanks for this, you guys. Um, I guess a couple of things is one is it it seems so perspic, pers- prescriptive, pers- it seems like you're telling them where to put buildings, and I think that that takes, I know what you said, but it takes away from any kind of a flow, you use the land form kind of design i- in my head, anyway. Two is, you you pick the route for Wine Country to run over the maximum number of of old oaks and 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 I would really love to see us, you know, like you said, bend it a little to the north or a little to the south on the on the west end. And then third is, you know, we use CET to buy this land, and it was certainly my understanding that that is the huge investment that's going to make this work. And to 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 say that there's significant other city investments in in dollars is is, I don't know, sort of but it's something we haven't talked about. So you know, I I don't know that we, I'm I'm not comfortable yet telling the prospective developers that yeah, in addition to this free land, here's a whole bunch of money that, you know, and roads and stuff. So I don't think we've talked about that yet. And then lastly, is the, has the county actually been talked to about including their property in the math here?
We have, we have talked to the county, I've talked to the county with with staff twice, and I I know the staff also have talked to the county other times. And 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 yes, they're at least at a conceptual level are want to the the goal, their goal in purchasing the property was to see affordable housing developed on the property or using the property for that. So.
Cool. And has has have they, I mean, if if the two, if the county property and the city property were adjacent, that makes it feel like one development is possible to me versus just separate lots with a road, you know, on a road. Has there been any talk with Von Floto's about of, you know, some kind of a property line trade to make optimize the jointness of option four?
I think it's something that, that's something we would like to talk with 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 them about.
And if I could, Mayor, I'd like to jump on in on the county issue, you know. We haven't wanted to get ahead of the city council and also want to be very respectful that there has not been a formal ask to the county yet. So they have been invited to this meeting to learn more about the project. But the purpose of alternative four is to show an option for closing that gap and an option that ultimately would deliver a more housing to the community. And and given what the county schools are, we at least are recommending that we look into it. It doesn't mean that it would necessarily happen. We have to engage in those conversations with the county. We have to engage in those conversations with the county.
Um, yeah, and I, I think that, you know, for a developer, as long as there's access to the properties, whether they're connected or not at this point, or even in five years from now. If they have those options to work with both of those properties and have some kind of access, I don't, I don't think for them, that is, would be a deal breaker, anyway. Um, Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. I guess my question is, um, can you explain to us how this, what you've done so far is actually going to lead into the development of the RFQ? And, and how this is going to play into the formation of decision criteria that we're going to have to, to use to make a decision about which developer to go with?
So um, the process that, uh, councillor that I've seen be most successful is what I think of as a, as a two-stage process, where the first stage is a developer rest, request for qualifications. And um, you know, that, that's intended to be simple for developers to put together. And so qualifications means, um, who are the principals of the development firm? Uh, as well as uh, your designers, engineers, other key people. What projects have you developed in the past that are similar to this? And, you know, one page or two-page letter that lets you know why they're excited about the site, what their general vision is. The point of making it simple is that uh, developers are busy and the most successful developers are the busiest. And so you hopefully get uh, numerous submittals. And so then you have a, a lo- a large list. You have uh, have hopefully five or even 10 different uh, submittals. You look at those and from that you choose. Usually I, I, I think three is a good number that are appear to be the most qualified. Understand what you're looking for and you do a request for proposals from them. And you, you don't want to be, you, you want to be direct to the uh, the first stage as well. But at that point, then you say, okay, now you're a finalist. So now give us a specific proposal uh, for this site that includes uh, you know, a site design, some basic deal points. Any findings of their due diligence process they would present to you? In terms of the criteria, um, I, I think I, I, I would go back to to this list, uh, it's broken into two slides. But, but I think as, as it's, as I understand it, you know, I think the, the first two criteria are the most, the first criteria. First one is the most important, the second one is the second most important. And um, I, I'd want to, uh, and we want to let developers know that. But then particularly in the, the proposal stage, they would be giving you specific information. Here's my site plan and here's the number of affordable rental housing units I think I can provide, et cetera. So, you know, hopefully that. And then, and then after that, you know, uh, you, you would choose a preferred developer. But there's always the chance that uh, that, that you, you can't reach a, a final deal with that preferred developer. That's why you've got the, the three uh, shortlist so you can go back to one of the other ones.
Thanks, and uh, you know, I'm just trying to get at, you know, the uh, the advantages of actually recommending a preferred strategy. And how that, you know, potentially feeds in again to the uh, the ultimate criteria for choosing a developer.
I, I, I really appreciated the uh, city coun- city manager's point um, uh, about you know, about the reason for recommending uh, alternative four. You know, uh, we're always, we understand uh, public dollars and private dollars are scarce. And so uh, we do think by, you know, enabling more development overall and more market rate development, you know, as a mix of this whole project, it uh, it's, it, it can improve the economics for some developers and, and really diminish any need for uh, for public dollars in the infrastructure.
So is it to attract, attract developers?
That's right, yeah.
I see, sorry, Mayor.
Brian, I have a question. So with alternative four, really, we're, we're still going to be doing alternative one, but add on the county's property in order not to have to pay for so much of the infrastructure that the city or the county won't have to pay as much of the infrastructure.
That's right.
But the numbers would be the same for the 80% and below, regardless of alternative one or alternative four. We're hoping you're estimating that we might get up to 100 units.
Yeah.
Is that, that true?
That's correct, that's correct. But I want to, I want to make one um, adjustment, which is that there's actually, for example, here, we're showing a total of 125 units on the site. There's 100 that are in blue that are rental uh, uh, housing units. And then there's 25 that are owner-occupied units.
The owner-occupied though are 80 to 120, correct?
That's right.
And the blue is 80 and below.
It's six, generally 60.
Generally 60 and below, okay. All right, thanks. Uh, Megan, and then did somebody else have their hand up? I was.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Oh, hey, Gladys. We can hear you now, Gladys.
Okay, perfect, I'll go.
Okay, you'll go after Megan, okay, all right. Go ahead, Megan.
Okay, um, I asked two financial questions. So when you had talked about gap financing, uh, this is jumping back kind of to Mark's question of, you know, we, there's other CET funds or SDCs are waived. Is that just so that the developer is not paying these primary infrastructure costs? Or is that above and beyond that of we need to pay for infrastructure? And all of these other financial things are needed to make the project work beyond just land donation?
We think that this set of, of incentives is necessary in order to for the project at pencil to, to be feasible for the developer. If, if, you know, if we uh, if we take out one of these pieces, then we think the developer will need to go fundraise for, you know, a comparable amount.
So that, so the city, in order to get any of this, the city needs to do property tax abatement, give them the land, pay down SDCs, provide other CET money and for the infrastructure in some form.
Yes.
And that's even with the market rate houses?
The, with the market rate, this, this bullet goes away. Yeah, uh, and the others remain.
Brian?
Yeah.
Is it, uh, would it be accurate to say that um, these are not exact? Right, we have added some, taken some away. We've talked about various iterations, so we're really not going to know until we move further along in the project. Is that accurate?
Well, particularly, i- it, it's accurate. And particularly when you look at, at this, for example, um, you know, uh, we don't know exactly what this park and open space looks like. We don't know exactly what this intersection looks like. And even to say exactly is probably too precise. So yes, so there are variables here. You know, I do think this is accurate in the general terms. Darcy and I have both worked on a lot of development projects. And uh, this is the way things look. Uh, but, but through a competitive process of seeking developers, you know, you will find, you will hopefully create competition and some competitive proposals in which um, uh, we would hope those developers would be incentivized to offer more to the city or offer somewhat better terms.
And Brian, if I may, you know,
Sure.
under the feasibility analyses that I did, we ended up with a um, pro forma that showed about a half a million dollars of um, CET from either the county or the city. So I mean, that's a, that's not a such a sizable amount that it might not be completely reduced by, you know, market changes over the next 12 to 18 months related to interest rates, demand and pricing for tax credits. So there are a lot of variables there too.
Talk about tax abatement a little bit. What does that actually mean?
So what that means is particularly on the uh, affordable rental uh, projects that, that this, these hundred units are uh, not paying property taxes for the lifetime of the project. Darcy, um, you want to talk about the duration typically?
Yeah, I mean, um, typically, if the city ordinance doesn't exist in a lot of municipalities, there is a city ordinance, ordinance that says specifically that affordable housing can request um, real estate tax abatement either um, for the entirety of the project or for the first 10 years of the project's existence. But there is a statewide um, rule that says that housing authority involvement does um, allow you through a relationship of them acting as a general manager and facilitating housing waitlist to your project, um, for them to be able to abate taxes in any jurisdiction in the state of Oregon.
A- and Darcy, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I, my, my impression is that uh, most affordable housing, most affordable housing is built by nonprofit institutions of some sort. And in most cases, it's not paying property taxes uh, because of that, you know, throughout the state.
I, I think that's a, I, I think generally that's a true statement.
You have other questions, Megan?
Yeah, yes, one more on such the other financial thing. But I guess total, and I know this, this will change and can change and depends on the developer. But if, if we're building, say we can get 100 units of affordable housing, what is the total amount of financing the city needs to be bringing to the table if it's just the land to make this pencil?
Do you want to talk a little bit about our calculation of what we thought system development costs would be?
Well, before I go there, I'd say um, councillor that your out-of-pocket cost at, at uh, going forward is uh, within these three bullet points. I don't know if I can highlight those, uh, these three bullet points for it. So it's, it's uh, because um, the, the, the first four these are from the state. Excuse me, property tax abatement, this is only on the rental. So you could, um, you could kind of show an opportunity cost of taxes not received here. But uh, and there's no net new dollars going out for the uh, uh, land. Again, it depends on your accounting perspective. But, but the, um, these three bullet points um, are uh, the, any amounts that the city would uh, pay, uh, really pay itself for, for SDCs. The CET funds, um, and then the inside infrastructure. The, and I, I know I'm uh, winding around your question, but then it also depends on uh, if we assume alternative four, we think that this primary site infrastructure can be uh, minimal or potentially nothing. We also know that there are uh, grant funds out there for, for uh, infrastructure this year. So it, it may be that it's the combination of, of these two. And um, I uh, my preference would be to get you a figure on that rather than uh, give you one right, right now.
For the C, for the CET, is it just what we, what the city of the county happens to have in their coffers now? Or is the CET for 10 years into the future? Or what, what are you talking about CET?
It, could I, Mayor, could I jump in here? I, I, I think um, without effect, we're sort of getting way down in the weeds. And I think what we need to hear as we put this solicitation together is what are their additional city goals? Is it a goal to not um, pay any additional money? Because if it is, then we need to know that. Is it a goal to not do a property tax abatement? You know, that's kind of where we need to be so we can put this solicitation together. We've come up with several alternatives for trying to close the infrastructure gap. The, a- as you heard Darcy say, the CET funds may or may not be required. It sort of depends on what happens with the county property. So there's just so many unknowns. So my suggestion would be, you know, if, if there are goals, and I hear, I hear quite a bit of trepidation around this. If there are goals beyond what we've outlined, it would be very helpful to, to understand what those are.
Okay, I'm going to let um, Gladys speak. She hasn't spoken yet and might have a question. And then I've got an idea how we can go forward here. So Gladys?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Brian, Darcy and, and city staff. As a goal, and, and this is just a question, because we are talking about money, potentially the housing authority being involved, uh, at what point in the conversation do we bring them on, including potentially a land trust? Or do we have to state that as a council, uh, to be one of the goals in this project?
Thanks, Gladys. Would you be answering that, Brian or Rachel? How that, they might be involved? I think just, go ahead.
I, I'd be happy to take a attempt at it. We uh, so going back to the, the request for qualifications format, we, I, I guess my thought is that the housing authority and the community land trust could be proposers, they could submit uh, proposals uh, as, as part of that. They could be on multiple teams. They could team together, uh, w- we don't know. We have talked with both of them and um, and kind of briefed them on the general parameters of, of uh, how we've been viewing the site, the kinds of things that you've seen tonight. And they appear to be supportive of, of uh, the direction we've been taking and, and believe that, you know, the site analysis and financial analysis are, make sense. But we have not uh, attempted to kind of include in the goals a requirement for their, their involvement.
If for some reason neither one decided to be involved as like a developer or as a builder of this project, how would the, how would we still try to work with them to ensure that we do have equitable, equitable financial resources for folks?
So there are, there are uh, other developers. There are developers throughout the state that build um, long-term rental housing. There are developers who build uh, affordable ownership homes. So um, you know, an assumption I'm making is that um, you will get proposals from from other entities. Or it could be multiple teams that include the housing authority. But there are other uh, nonprofit and for-profit builders that, that build these, these types of things.
Yeah, I think that, you know, that they will have multiple opportunities to submit either alone or with other people if they desire so to, to do it that way. So like we, they won't be left, left out for sure. They'll, they'll have opportunities. So let's just talk about the big picture. So we've got um, a couple, a couple of big picture things. We've got um, what looks like the possibility, we wanted, we have to have at least 50 units. It looks like we might be able to have up to 100 units or possibly more from the analysis we have so far. We have some units that could be 80 to 100. We also have the county property that um, if added in and if some market rate is added in, might be able to pay for this um, infrastructure that is fairly expensive, several different things. So I guess the question- that is fairly expensive, several different things. So I guess the question is, and as you've stated here, Brian, that these entities that give us the RFQs, we're gonna ask them for more than one proposal, so to speak. They'll be, they'll be open to do whatever. But I guess the question is, do, what do we want to do? I mean, it's, this is costing more than we thought maybe it would. And these are some alternatives to pay for the infrastructure, or we can come up with some money for more infrastructure. So that's kind of the bottom line, I think, is do we want to pay for more infrastructure? Or, or not? But I think we should let the community, the building community, give us proposals. Now, am I stating it wrong, Rachel, or what?
Mayor, the only thing I would add is that what we're, what we would plan to do is move forward with the request for qualifications at this point. So if there is something missing from the goals, you know, or something that, that council really wants us to take into consideration as we put that together, it would be helpful to hear that now. Otherwise, we will proceed and, and we'll be able to answer some of these questions as we get further down in the process.
Okay, great. Jessica, did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I say what Rachel says, I feel like we don't know enough. What we need to just do is do the RFQ. And the question is, do we need to add any more statements to the goals so that we can get it out the door? I don't have any more statements to add to the goals.
The only thing I have to add is, you know, we have, that we want the units to be energy efficient. And I imagine there's a possibility that some of the units that might have twenty, twenty-five, thirty in an apartment building might have a community room. And I, I'd like to put the word energy resiliency in there too, because these might be places that we could have some more resilient areas if our power goes down. So just add that one word in, energy resiliency, that's all. Any, anyone else? No one else?
Yeah, I have my hand raised.
Megan?
Yeah, I guess, I don't know if it's a goal, but you know, of the alternatives, you know, the general of alternative four, including the county lot I'm on board for, but I, I would, you know, if we're talking about one or two becomes alternative four, like I'd rather have more middle income housing in the alternative two than alternative one. So I guess I'd rather alternative four become, you know, two-point A or whatever. Instead of one-point A.
You'd rather have, say that first, you'd like to have alternative two than one? Is that what you said?
So like, you know what, alternative four is basically alternative one, but with some market rate. But I, you know, alternative two allowed for, I think, almost double the amount of eighty to one-twenty, which some of it would come market rate with alternative four, but I, I don't know why we're setting ourselves up for a lower amount of either middle income or market rate with our alternative preference.
I think one of the, and maybe Brian, you could go back to it, but one of the downfalls, I think, to alternative two is that you ended up with big swaths of surface parking, which is real, you know, conceivably really unattractive.
You've also talked about that these blocks on the thing are not what someone actually is gonna do, so should we be preemptively saying, you would do this ugly, but we don't wanna?
Well, you have to, I mean, the land constrains what you can do, and you do have to have one-point-five parking spaces per unit. So it just depends how you lay it out. You, you, it's hard to get the parking there without reducing the middle housing, unfortunately, and we, we took all kinds of stabs at it.
So, so the reason there's more gray in big parking lots, you know, this big gray area for the parking lots is because you have more units there, so you've got to have more gray space somewhere for parking. Okay.
But, I, I mean, and as the group has said, you know, we, we've just done these conceptually. Someone may come up with a, a third option that provides the affordable rental housing that the city is wanting and also the middle housing in a larger number.
I, I guess I'd just like to say, I mean, noted councillor Saunders that, I mean, I think the point that we're trying to make was alternative one has fewer owner-occupied units, alternative two has more. All things equal, you, you prefer more.
And I think those are stated in our first two goals too, you know, this, this is what we want the most of. This is the second goal, most important. So I, I think those will come through in the RFQ.
Right, well, I guess our goals say that, but our preferences say otherwise, so.
If it's council consensus, we could change the goal to somehow say, you know, maximize the number of units on the site. If, if that's the, the council consensus, regardless of, you know, impact to other things such as parking. There could be, you know, we could be looking at bigger buildings. There'd be other ways to maximize. Brian, yeah, I'm maybe speaking out of turn, and so go ahead, but again, I think figuring out those goals is, is really important.
Personally, I thought the goals were stated pretty well, just because the first goal is eighty percent or below. Brian has stated that a lot of these are gonna be sixty percent or below in order to get the, the additional funding we need. I, you know, I don't want to compromise making a park smaller. And, you know, huge parking lots don't seem desirable to me either, and I want as many units as we can, but I, I don't want the whole thing to look like a parking lot either. So I, I don't, I don't really prefer to change the goals, but what do others think? Okay, Jessica's shaking her head. Tim?
I agree with you, Mayor. I, I think we should proceed on as, as the staff everyone's.
I don't, I don't see a lot of comments going on on this. Is everyone good to go ahead with RFQ after the presentation this evening? I've got one thumbs up. Two, three thumbs up. Mark, Megan? You're, you're not, you're not coming through, Megan?
Can you hear me now?
Now I can hear you, yep.
Yeah, I, I don't feel like I'm super confident I know what we're doing, but if, if the next step is basically do this to get more information, then yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward.
But I think, I think that's what we're doing. Gladys?
But I have a question. So even if we did state maximize the number of units, just, just to add it in there, it doesn't necessarily mean that the proposals that are gonna come in are all maxed out or at the highest amount of units that could potentially be on the site. Just because we put it in there doesn't necessarily mean that they'll build it, is what I'm saying, is what I'm asking. If we added another point, another goal.
Brian, what do you think that would do to the RFQ or RFP?
Well, I, I think, I frankly, I agree with what you said, Mayor, which is that maybe that is what you want, maximizing the number of units, but I think, I, 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 I'm not sure that's what you want, because, because for example, if we could build units on this park, you know, we, we probably could, but is that, is that desirable? So I think, I, I think maybe it's something like maximize the number of units, you know, to the extent it doesn't prevent, prevent the project from achieving other goals. That's my view, that, that you're, you'll have some choices like between park space and units, and, and those are difficult to, to iron out at this stage. And you ultimately will be negotiating with the developer and you'll be able to kind of hopefully get to the fine points of deciding between how much park space, how much, how many units at that stage. But we can certainly indicate that, you know, more units, that the city prefers more units, affordable units to less affordable units, that's clear. I, I also would just say, I think what's, what's really clear and what we didn't include in the goals is just that fiscal prudence is important, and to the extent possible to limit the city's investment is, is, is important. So we could include that too.
All right. I'm looking at everyone here. We're, I think I'm gonna try and wrap it up if we can. Is everyone okay to keep the goals? Gladys has mentioned maybe doing something else. It sounds like we're, might be a little bit early for that, and we're gonna get, you know, more alternatives when we get further along with this. So if everyone's okay. Megan?
Sorry, I guess I still have, I know we've talked about this a bit. Do we, at what point do the developer about what the site would actually have on it?
So what I would recommend in the process I've gone through before is that in the summer, you release a developer RFQ, you, you receive some medals there. It's probably not until the fall that you then shortlist and those three developers, approximately three developers, provide you with, with proposed, specific sites, specific proposals.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, once we get down to it and we, we, we can fine tune things when we pick, when we have picked a developer or when we have gotten down to at least three, or maybe down to the one we're gonna use, then it's the negotiation of what, what we actually are gonna get. All right. I think we're ready to go forward with RFQ. Thank you, have our input. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, appreciate it. Really, a lot of work and so glad to be where we are here and moving forward.
I, I look forward to seeing this site built out in a way that makes you guys really happy and proud and provides affordable housing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are we still on our regular, we aren't getting at a new meeting. This is part of the regular meeting now, correct?
That's correct, Mayor. It's the same, it's the same. Yeah, you'll need to adjourn the special meeting and then start the next one.
All right, it is six-twenty-three, and we're gonna adjourn our special meeting that we had this evening regarding the Rand Road property. And I'm gonna go ahead and open the Hood River City Council meeting for April twelfth, twenty-twenty-one and call that to order at six-twenty-three. I'm gonna do our land acknowledgement first and then the pledge of allegiance. As we meet tonight, let us all remember that today, we are stewards of land that has been home to indigenous peoples for thousands of years before the recent arrival of the European heritage dominant culture. We honor this land's ancestors as we go about our business today. Jonathan, do we have a flag? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, now we are going to recess to call, we're gonna recess the regular council meeting and call to order the Hood River Urban Renewal Agency meeting for April twelfth, twenty-twenty-one. Do we have any additions or corrections?
We do not.
Right. Do we have any, I don't have anyone written down for business from the audience. Jen, was there any business from the audience for urban renewal, as far as you know?
No one signed up, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. We have minutes to approve from January eleventh.
I would move we approve the minutes from January eleventh, twenty-twenty-one.
I have a motion from Megan and a second from Mark to approve the minutes from January eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Megan?
Yes.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Eric?
Hi.
Tim? Gladys?
Hi.
And I don't think, Hobie from Urban Renewal is here this evening. Is Dave Meriwether here? I'm trying to see if he's on our attendees.
I don't see him there.
I don't see him. Okay, all right, just wanted to double check. All right, the minutes are approved. Regular business item. Well, Norris?
Thank you. So we have an intergovernmental loan agreement between the city of Hood River and the urban and, and the Hood River Urban Renewal Agency, sorry about that. And the last time we had a loan agreement between the two entities was back with the wastewater treatment plant odor control project. And these intergovernmental loans between the two entities saves us from needing to go out to the private markets for loans, saves a lot of staff time, saves the governing board's time, passing resolutions, saves fees on bond council and bank fees. So it's really our cheapest source of internal capital when we, cheapest source of capital when we look internally first to fund these projects. So this loan agreement is required because we paused division of tax for urban renewal districts as a COVID-nineteen reaction, and that helped all the overlapping districts have a one-time boost in, in general property tax revenues, which was really important while we saw all COVID-nineteen effect of our lodging taxes and parking revenues and things of the sort. But it meant that the waterfront district doesn't have the cash on hand to make a payment towards the waterfront waterfront storm waterline replacement project. So what this loan agreement will do is provide a one-year loan from the City of Hood River's Equipment Replacement Fund to the Urban Renewal Agency. So the Urban Renewal Agency can pay for phase one of the construction that was already completed on the waterfront storm waterline. And then that will be paid back next year, next fiscal year after November's property taxes are received. At an interest, interest rate, simple interest of one percent, which is fair, given that the city's local government investment pool managed by the Oregon State Treasury is yielding about six tenths of a percent. So a pretty simple transaction, but one that I think saves both entities money. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Questions from anyone? We're so fortunate to be able to do this. I don't, Jessica, did you have a question?
I was gonna make a motion.
Okay, great.
I move that the agency board authorize the agency administrator to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Hood River to borrow seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand over a term of one year at an interest rate of one percent.
We have a motion from Jessica, and who seconded that?
I'll second.
Okay, Megan seconded that. That would authorize the agency administrator to, administrator to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Hood River to borrow seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars over a term of one year at an interest rate of one percent. Additional discussion? I'll do a roll call vote. Megan?
Yes.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Tim? Eric?
Hi.
Gladys?
Hi.
And chair votes, yes. Right.
Thank you very much.
Great. We only had that one business item. Does anyone have any urban renewal items that they want to bring up? No, all right, we will adjourn the urban renewal meeting at six-thirty. And we will reopen the Hood River City Council meeting. And now we will do business from the audience. Do you have the list, Jen, of people?
Looking for it, Your Honor.
Can you find it?
Mayor, I believe it's Viola Kitchens and followed by Peter Cornellson.
Okay. Jonathan, do you want to put them on? Three minutes.
Hi, my name is Viola Kitchens and I'm a junior at the Hood River Valley High School and I'm here speaking on behalf of the Climate Action Club. We would like to call on the city council to uphold their promises and commitments that were made in 2019 to the climate crisis resolution and provide yearly updates on the progress that Hood River has made to reach the carbon emission net zero goal by 2035. We are requesting updates to be released every April because that is the month that we celebrate Earth Day. On top of that, I would also love to encourage businesses that want to demonstrate their commitment to the environment to sign the sustainability pledge that will be released the week of April 20th by the Climate Action Club. I urge you to take this very seriously and think about the younger generation that will be greatly affected by climate change. Thank you.
Thank you, Viola. Peter Cornellson, is that right?
Council members, Peter Cornellson, 1003 Fifth Street, corner of Fifth and June with some balsam root blooming on the corner next to the stop sign. I, I've actually got about four things to say, so I'm going to race through them. First of all, thank you. Big, big thanks for what you're doing, what you've done in terms of COVID and all the amazing work that planning and staff are turning out with these new codes and the transportation system plan. I'm blown away. You guys are working hard. Makes me proud to be a Hood River resident. Second, what, what Viola said in terms of the climate crisis resolution is one of five key points. And I just want to remind you, and I'll send this to you as a as a little remembrance. End municipal gas, greenhouse gas emissions by 2035. Develop adaptation and resilient strategies, review progress, update its approach every year. And that's what Viola asked for. And I understand you may be able to that may not be too hard. I'm impressed that you hired an analyst on that score. Educate residents about how to stop global warming and finally build community participation, inclusion and support. So Columbia Gorge Climate Action Network would love to work with you in that regard. And I will also send you our Earth Month list of calendar items, Zoom meetings that's happening. We just had one tonight from the renewal workshop in Cascade Locks talking about the circular economy. Let's see, what is next? I think you know I'm associated with Thrive these days. I'm the president. Heather Staton sent you one recommendation for the transportation system plan that I'd appreciate if you look at. It's having to do with bike lanes. And finally, I've been working a little bit with Kathy Fitzpatrick, mobility manager for McKed. And Kathy is going to come before you with a hopefully a proclamation to declare May as Bike Month. And we'd love to see that happen. It's in line with the Hood River Energy Council goals as well as the climate resolution. So that is it. Thank you for listening. Thanks for the job you're doing.
Mayor, two more.
Okay.
Susan Crowley and Mari Ruth Petzing.
Good evening. Can you guys all hear me okay? This is Susan Crowley.
We can hear you. Yes.
City of Hood River, 411 12th Street. I wanted to talk a bit about the process that the middle housing development of the ordinance has undergone. I helped start that middle missing conversation about three or four years ago. I think it was a very important initiative and it seemed to comport with the very best goal of city planning, which is you first think about the kind of community you want to be and then you work from there. And the process has been very disappointing to watch. Basically, what's happened is the decisions gave us a density level that in some ways is even greater than large cities are required to adopt. And those large cities are over 25,000 people. We're roughly over 8,000 at this point. The ideas were promising. We were kind of sold by the lovely images of cottages and nests of gardens with flowers spilling over the front gates. And Peter even now in his testimony and his comment mentioned balsam root and the pleasure that gives him on the streetscape. And the idea was to reduce the footprints of the dwellings and have a more human scale and a more friendly streetscape in some ways. And that's a very important thing, I think, to everybody, regardless of income level, regardless of where they live in town. Is that friendly sense of community sharing that you get from a generous and open streetscape that involves efforts at gardening and trees and shade. And that is a gift to the public. I think that every person who lives in town gives to one another. And I think that a lot of that promise of neighbor-friendly streetscapes has been kind of lost in this middle housing process. And it was painful to watch because with almost every one of the changes you made in the ordinance from what the planning commission gave you, which was a pretty dense proposal to start with, there was a loss of that friendly streetscape. There were front porches eliminated last time on the street facing the requirement that they have some gesture to a front porch friendliness of the neighborhood. The units are packed so closely together. They're still parking in front on the streetscape side. The heights were slightly increased, so there's more bulk of buildings. And as always, there was no thought given apparently to issues of overflow into the streets, which makes it harder for pedestrians, harder for cyclists, harder for people to enjoy a friendly sense of a small town. And that is the essence of this place. And when you talk to almost anyone, that's what they want to keep. And I think that this proposal has been disappointing in that sense. And I think especially it's a mistake to push it so fast as you have done because you want to check it off your list. I understand it's been a long process. But there has not been the public support developed that you really need in order to create public satisfaction with what could have been a beautiful change. Thanks very much.
You said Mari Ruth Petzing?
That's correct.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me?
We can hear you, Mari Ruth.
Excellent. My name is Mari Ruth Petzing. I live at 1806 Avalon Drive here in the city. I have appreciated listening to the public comments on the middle housing code change and want to take a moment to respond to what I've heard. I want to start by saying that, given the limited land availability and the many competing uses in our community for the land, I am always glad to see efforts to use the land that we have more efficiently. I hope that amending the code will lead to some increase in attainable housing. However, many residents have expressed concerns that any such gains will likely be temporary and limited. I have also heard in the public comments, a clear recognition that our community's lack of affordable housing is a critical issue. Many residents expressed heartfelt concern about the lack of housing options for themselves, for their friends, for their family, neighbors and their employees. I have also listened to a number of creative and practical suggestions for ameliorating our housing crisis. Suggestions such as a land trust, public housing, public-private partnerships, deed restricted developments, ADU tax incentives. None of the suggestions that I have heard are mutually exclusive with the middle housing code. Given the near universal acknowledgement of need and the wealth of ideas, I hope that we as a community are able to put these suggestions into action. Any affordable housing project will need money. As a homeowner in the city, I would support and campaign for a dedicated levy to fund true, long-term affordable housing solutions. I want to end by recognizing the hard work of the council, the city staff and the many community members who have participated in the process. I hope that we as a community continue to bring the energy and resources to support affordable housing solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mari Ruth. All right. That was our business from the audience, correct?
Yes, Mayor, although, and I apologize for the interruption, I do believe that Mari Ruth would like to speak under the transportation system plan public hearing as well.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. Now we have a presentation which is an up update on the Hood River Warming Shelter and Shelter Services. And I think Sarah Kellums?
Hello, can you all hear me? Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share an update from Hood River Shelter Services tonight. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen now. Over its 11-year history, the Warming Shelter has always had strong community support and our partnerships became even more critical this past year during the pandemic. Looking back to a year ago, we had just finished our third winter of shelter operations at Riverside Church. Being at Riverside for three years allowed our program to stabilize. However, with the onset of the pandemic, it was clear that the small space we rented would no longer be feasible. We made the decision to leave Riverside without knowing where we would go or what would come next, but with a commitment to our mission. Last summer, the Shelter Board and Operations Committee engaged in internal conversations about what sheltering might look like during the pandemic. We took part in local and regional information sharing and collaborative efforts, including participating on the Oregon statewide homeless populations task force to share and learn alongside service providers and government leaders from across the state. This statewide group also provided direct connections with the Oregon Health Authority for shelter planning during COVID. Through this learning process, we found out about non-congregant shelter, which limits shared breathing space in order to minimize exposure to and transmission of the virus. This would be our most protective option. And so last summer, our Shelter Board voted to move forward with non-congregant shelter. And by the end of the summer, we had decided to utilize pallet shelters as the basis for our program. This was only possible through care spending that was allocated by both the city of Hood River and Hood River County. As you know, we struggled to find a location for this past winter's program. We explored over a dozen sites last summer, both public and privately owned. And each of these sites was either deemed unfeasible or permission was not granted by the property owner. We were at that time working on a deadline within a 90-day period for flexible shelter siting provided by the Oregon State Legislature. At the 11th hour, the Board of Hood River Valley Christian Church said yes to citing the Warming Shelter for one season on the lower parking lot of their church. We were able to submit our application on the final day of the flexible sitting window and move forward with this location for a one-year period. Hood River Valley Christian Church opened not only their space, but their hearts to us. At the start of November, just one week before the shelter was slated to open, the pallet shelter team arrived to install our 13 units on the lower parking lot. All of the employees who build pallet shelters have experienced homelessness and/or incarceration. It was a moving experience to witness the crew at work. At one point, I commented to a member of their team that our program is small because our community is small. He looked me in the eye and he said, every one of these shelters matters. Here is a short time lapse video of the crew installing the shelters. Before the Warming Shelter opened, we reached out to the surrounding neighborhood to introduce our staff team and provide information about our program. Many residents were nervous about the shelter being located in their neighborhood. Some people held deep fears which came to the surface, while others reached out to us with offers of donations and support. Our team worked through the winter to minimize the impact of our program on area residents. COVID safety measures at the Warming Shelter included nightly symptoms and temperature check, increased cleaning and sanitization, and sourcing and stocking of PPE. The Hood River County Health Department and the Oregon Health Authority provided input on our COVID procedures. And the Health Department, One Community Health and County Emergency Management Team provided essential PPE for our program. Throughout the shelter season, we did not have any cases of COVID positivity or confirmed exposure among our shelter guests or staff. We are grateful to the support of the community in planning this protective model that helped keep our homeless community members safe while they accessed winter shelter. This past winter, the Warming Shelter was open 119 consecutive nights and served 89 individual guests, including 25 women, two children and six veterans. Fifteen of our guests were Hispanic or Latino and eight Native Americans. Our average nightly guest count was 13 people per night. We are often asked where our guests come from and if they are local community members. This past winter, 50 of the 89 guests we served reported at intake that they grew up in the gorge. And 83 of the 89 guests reported that their last permanent residence was in the gorge. While some service providers were not able to visit the shelter due to limits on in-person services, outreach worker Alisa Fowler came to the Warming Shelter once a week to meet with our guests and provide connections to housing and other community resources. Thank you to the city for prioritizing the need for outreach as part of the Hood River Homeless Stakeholders Coalition. Also to note, this past winter, the total number of people we served decreased slightly as compared with last year. I believe this is due primarily to the shelter program in the DOWS being open every night this past winter as compared with years past when the shelter there was open only when the temperature was below freezing. The DOWS Shelter Program is now operated by Mid-Columbia Community Action in partnership with the city of the DOWS. And it will be continuing year-round services as long as funding and program outcomes allow. We are hopeful that this continued programming will result in long-term outcomes, including housing placements and engagement with other services for the shelter program participants. In addition, a small Warming Shelter also opened in Stevenson this past winter, operated by Washington Gorge Action Programs in partnership with Skamania County. Having these increased services across our region helped ease the burden on our program here in Hood River. This winter, due to COVID, shelter volunteers served in background supportive roles. We hope to be able to bring our volunteers back in an expanded capacity to support shelter operations next year. operations next year, if it is safe to do so. Our expanded staff team supported our shelter operations on-site and included four returning team members from years prior. Staff worked together throughout the season to provide safety and consistency for our guests while supporting each other as well. Expanded staffing was possible through Emergency Solutions Grant Funding from Mid-Columbia Community Action. New leadership at MACAC and the expanding role of the agency in our region is having a significant and positive impact on housing stabilization and homeless services. The Warming Shelter Meals Program, under the leadership of Chef Mark DiResta of the Riverside Best Western, continued this year in a year that was difficult for so many local businesses. Not only did our meals partners continue to support the shelter during this challenging year, but we actually had new partners join the program. So what's next? We are currently exploring partnerships with local orchardists to loan out our pallet shelters for COVID-safe workforce housing during the coming spring, summer, and fall. We are excited about the opportunity to share our pallet shelters in order to meet another need in the community. We are also preparing to request feedback from residents in the area of Hood River Valley Christian Church. We feel that our shelter program ran smoothly with a minimal impact on the surrounding area, and we hope that this will be reflected in the feedback we receive from residents. We plan to utilize the pallet shelters and the non-congregent model again next year, and we need to find a new location for next winter's shelter program. We are exploring the possibility of partnering around a long-term site with Mid-Columbia Community Action in order to provide a hub for services in the area of housing stabilization here in Hood River County. This would likely include homeless prevention services in the form of rental and utility assistance, as well as expanded homeless services, including street outreach and the basic needs of laundry and showers, which have been identified as the top needs by our homeless community members. Homeless services as one component of housing stabilization represent an important piece of the complex housing crisis our community and our state face at this time. I am grateful to the council for prioritizing housing and for the variety of ways in which the city is seeking to engage around this complex issue. In order to continue to provide shelter services and help people experiencing homelessness stabilize, we will benefit from an ongoing partnership with the city in a public, the public-private partnership, excuse me. If time allows, I'm able to take questions, and if anyone would like a copy of this presentation, I'm also more than willing to share that with you.
Thank you, Sarah, so much for that presentation. I'm really happy that it all worked out to, out at the Valley Christian Church, and they were able to help you, and it all went really well. That's great news. You said, and I think Kenny LaPointe from Mid-Columbia Community Action mentioned this too, that it sure would be great if we could have a kind of a center for homeless and for Mid-Columbia Community Action Centers outreach, kind of in the same area. So are you going to be trying to look for that within the next six months or a year?
Well, we have a kind of a two-pronged approach for that. I'm really excited about that potential partnership around a location, and the state legislature is again considering flexible shelter citing. This time, it would be for over a one-year period to allow shelter providers across the state the opportunity to provide needed shelter beds. And so what may happen is that we may need to find another temporary one-year location for this coming winter while simultaneously working with MACAC to find a true long-term location and bringing together the capital funding that would be needed for that. So that is most likely. If it ends up being possible that we could secure a true long-term location before next winter, of course, that would be ideal. It just may not be feasible.
I have something that I want to say. Sarah, this is Gladys. Thank you so much for your leadership, Sarah. Thank you so much for all of this work. It's really moving to see. I was actually personally at the pallet shelter myself and having volunteered at Riverside The Difference and was so very excited to still be able to offer services. So thank you so much for that, and I just really want to appreciate and thank all the volunteers and community partners, as well as Chef Mark for making sure that folks are fed. We're so grateful for all of your help.
Anyone else? Tim?
I don't really have any questions, but I want to echo a glass at you, and I'm thankful for you, Sarah, and I'm thankful for all the people that you work with and collaborate with that address this important need in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It truly is a collaborative effort, and I would say the most rewarding part, in addition to providing our service, is the opportunity to work with so many individuals and organizations within our community.
Thank you, thank you so much, Sarah. Really appreciate your report.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. All right. We have a public hearing next on the Transportation System Plan. Okay, I've got a script that I need to read for this, so stay with me, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, in the matter of Planning Department File Number 2020-25, Amendments to the Hood River Transportation System Plan, I would like to reopen the public hearing. The Planning Commission held hearings on March 1st and March 15th, 2021, and continued the hearing to tonight with their recommendations. And this is the city council's first hearing on the matter. Let me begin with a brief description of the legislative process and a few disclosures required by state law. We will begin with a staff report in which staff will describe the proposed amendments, the applicable approval criteria, and how the proposal is consistent with those criteria. Secondly, we will take public testimony. When the public testimony is complete and before we close the record, we will check to see if staff has any parting comments following the conclusion of all public testimony. After that, we will close the record, deliberate, and render a decision. Our decision is not final until it is reduced to writing and officially issued. The city council will make the final decision, and when the written decision is issued, it may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals. However, to appeal one of our decisions, you must participate either orally or in writing before the close of the record. Here are some basic rules for presenting testimony tonight. Begin with your name and mailing address. Please limit your testimony to the issues that are relevant to the proposal and the approval criteria. If you believe that other or different criteria apply, please identify those and explain why you think they apply. That is it in the way of procedural introduction for tonight's hearing. If anyone has any questions about the process as we go forward, feel free to ask them during the public testimony portion of the hearing. All right, we'll do. Kevin, do you want to do your staff report now, or should I do disclosures first?
If you wouldn't mind doing the disclosures now, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure. So does anyone have any disclosures or conflicts of interest regarding the Transportation System Plan Amendment we're looking at tonight? Okay, let's see. None from Gladys. And I have no from Megan, and no from Jessica, and no from Mark. I just want to state this for the record for people that are only listening. A no from Tim. And Eric, did you shake your head? Okay, Eric is a no, and I am also a no, so there are no conflicts of interest. So Kevin, we can go ahead with the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor McBride. I'm going to share a screen and turn on a PowerPoint. Please let me know when it becomes visible. Again, thank you, Mayor and councilors. Tonight, we have John Baskett of DKS Associates joining us for the hearing. John helped the city with the 2011 TSP update, and he's been helping us with the current amendments. For legislative decisions such as this, the Planning Commission forwards recommendations to the city council, and the council makes the final decision. The Planning Commission's final hearing on the matter was held on March 15th, and there's a brief memo in the packet from the Planning Commission explaining their recommendations. The packet's cover sheet includes recommendations for project funding, one of the primary issues that we need to discuss tonight. You also have a staff report. The draft TSP amendments attract changes with supporting documents, written testimony, and a summary of feedback from virtual open house. All the materials are available for download from the city's website. The applicable criteria are specified in Section 17.08.020 and 17.08.050 of the zoning ordinance, and they are addressed in the staff report. Tonight, I'll start with some background information and an overview of the proposed amendments before addressing funding for projects in the TSP. We'll need to confirm the projects identified in the TSP that will be funded included in what is referred to as the TSP's financially constrained plan. John and I will describe this in more detail later in the presentation. Public testimony should be taken prior to deliberation, and you may choose to close the hearing and deliberate tonight, or continue the hearing and deliberate at your next meeting. This is not a complete TSP update. It is narrow in scope, limited mostly to transportation system improvements on the west side of the city, but some updates such as a revised cross-section for local streets can be applied more broadly. These TSP amendments were initiated by the city council as addressed in the council's 2020 work plan, under a goal of promoting an efficient and safe multimodal transportation system that alleviates traffic and parking congestion and encourages biking, pedestrian access, and public transportation. In addition to these TSP amendments, the 2020 work plan anticipated the Safe Routes to Schools Plan project that is underway, as well as an upcoming historic Columbia River Highway State Trail Streetscape project. And since that time, the city also initiated the Height Streetscape Plan project. So additional TSP amendments are likely to be presented in the future, depending upon the outcome of these projects. Again, the proposed TSP amendments are limited mostly to transportation improvements on the west side of the city. The city initiated the West Side Area Concept Plan Project in the summer of 2016. I think actually we applied for a grant in the May of 2015, so been working on this for quite some time. The concept plan focused on land use and transportation in the area where most of Hood River's developable land is located. It was prepared over a period of about a year and a half with the assistance of a strong consultant team, two advisory committees, numerous open houses, and other efforts that generated a lot of public discussion. The concept plan report was published in December of 2017, and beginning in March of 2018, the Planning Commission held more than 20 public hearings over about 18 months to take public testimony and refine recommendations in the concept plan. The TSP amendments are based largely on recommendations from the streets and transit framework from the concept plan report, including relocation of a future minor arterial street, known at that time as Alignment D, establishing a new street classification for neighborhood connector streets, and updating street designs. The amendments also are based on the pedestrian and bike framework of the concept plan report, which recommends, among other improvements, an off-street trail along Henderson Creek and Ridge Line Trail north of Sherman Avenue. During public hearings on the concept plan in the spring and summer of 2019, the Planning Commission saw feedback from the public regarding these frameworks, and the commission's recommendations were forwarded to council after a hearing in August of 19. Following the city council work session in September of 2019, council directed staff to prepare updates to the TSP based on the Planning Commission's recommendations. I'll provide an overview of the proposed TSP amendments in the following slides. The primary amendment is the relocation of a future north-south minor arterial street, now referred to as West Side Drive. This is located between Wine Country Avenue on the north and May Street on the south, as seen in these slides. And I'm not sure if you can, well, you can see my cursor, but on the left side of the screen, you see an image of the current TSP and a connection between Mount Adams Wine Country and 30th and May. And the proposal is to move this street to the west and in a new alignment. The rationale, excuse me, rationale for this alignment is that it can be designed to be less steep than the other alternatives. There were three alternatives evaluated. It avoids placement of a minor arterial at the front of a future school, and it has less disruption of the neighborhood connectivity than the other alternatives. The commission recommended changing the minor arterial design for Alignment D to feature physically separated bike lanes rather than buffered on-street bike lanes. Due to topographical challenges and concerns about cost, a hybrid design was prepared with a physically separated bike lane on one side only and a buffered bike lane on the opposite side. We anticipate using this design on minor arterial streets that have not yet been constructed. We also have a design with on-street buffered bike lanes that was developed during this process, which is expected to be helpful for retrofitting existing minor arterials in some locations. And I should note, as Peter Cornellison noted earlier, that we received written testimony today from Thrive Hood River about this design, and I believe that was forwarded to you. The TSP now incorporates neighborhood connector streets to improve connectivity. The dashed green lines on this map are the conceptual alignments. They function like local streets with wider planner strips to accommodate stormwater. They've not been added to project lists in the TSP, just as other local streets are not at it, but they will be implemented when development is proposed. Planning Commission recommended using a treatment known as advisory shoulders on these streets, which feature only a single travel lane and much wider bike lanes. State law generally prohibits vehicles from driving in bike lanes, so advisory shoulders are not recommended at this time. However, there is a block-long example in southeast Portland, and there may be opportunities in the future to consider using advisory shoulders in Hood River. I should note that we found one mistake on this cross-section. It should note the width of the pavement is 34 feet rather than 33 feet, and it will be corrected in the final TSP document. Local street options now feature planner strips between curbs and sidewalks to improve conditions for pedestrians. The Planning Commission originally recommended six-foot minimum sidewalks, retaining planner strip widths, and reducing pavement width to 26 feet. Reducing pavement width would not be sufficient to accommodate on-street parking, so that's not recommended. As explained in their March 15th memo, the commission does recommend allowing curp-tight sidewalks in certain locations or circumstances, such as when there is an existing pattern of curp-tight sidewalks on a block and adjacent to a development site. Staff does not recommend adding special language to the TSP or to the engineering standards to address these circumstances, because there's already a note in the street design that allows the city engineer to permit modifications, and that's highlighted in the slide. Moving on, the intersections of Mount Adams at Cascade Avenue and Mount Adams at Wine Country Avenue now include roundabouts as preferred alternatives in the TSP, and traffic calming measures have been added to 30th Street between May and Sherman. We updated the pedestrian system map and the list of projects and cost estimates in the TSP, and we updated the bicycle system map and list of projects and cost estimates in the TSP. We use plain language to designate bike routes, formerly known as bike boulevards. I should note that some commissioners, but some planning commissioners, were not satisfied with staff's recommendation to avoid identifying streets that have bike routes with a new neighborway designation, which is intended to discourage through traffic, but through traffic by automobiles. However, information about neighborways has been added to the TSP. However, information about neighborways has been added to the TSP, and it's possible they could be implemented with neighborhood support in some areas that don't experience much traffic. North of May Street, this slide shows conceptual alignments of pedestrian improvements. Limits were refined based on topography and to reduce redundancy. P-19 is in kind of the center of your screen, north to south. That is the Henderson Creek Trail, and P-20 is the Ridge Line Trail. South of May Street, P-11 was added as a 10-foot-wide east-west path between Frankton Road and Belmont Avenue aligned with Post Canyon Drive. The segment between Frankton and 30th Street in here could be constructed as an interim improvement or it could complement construction of Post Canyon Street when it's extended in the future. The local street connectivity map, Figure 7, was updated to reflect West Side Drive and the new neighborhood connector street locations. Connectivity is a key element in making the system more transit-friendly. No other transit component amendments are recommended in the TSP document at this time, but Columbia Area Transit will be working on a transit master plan update this year, and city staff are expected to participate. CAT also is working with the city to identify fixed route transit stop locations where permanent shelters and other improvements can be provided. So with that, just would like to respond to any questions that councilors may have about these amendments before we get into the discussion of funding. And if there are none, I can keep moving. I got about 10 more minutes and slides. Prior to finalizing the TSP amendments, the city must determine whether funding for projects will be based upon existing revenue sources, including transportation system development charges or STCs, or if it's likely that additional revenue will be generated to fund broader list of projects. We held a virtual open house at hoodriverTSP.com that included a bilingual survey intended to get a sense of the community's priorities for funding projects. We use Facebook, print ads in the Columbia Gorge News, and spot ads in their digital paper, as well as other media outlets to alert folks to the survey. Now, we're nearly 100 responses. A summary of the community feedback is included in your materials. The top three projects named by respondents are improvements to the Indian Creek Trail, improvements to 12th and 13th Streets in the Heights, including projects for cyclists and at intersections, as well as the intersection improvement at Cascade and Rant. A couple of these fall outside the scope of this project, but they are priorities and they will be addressed. The first step is to get projects into what is known as the TSP's preferred plan, and we've done that by adding the West Side Projects to the draft document. There's a big gap between the estimated cost of the preferred projects and the revenue sources that currently are available to pay for them. The TSP also includes a section known as the financially constrained plan, which lists projects that are funded through a variety of sources, including transportation STCs. John Baskett can provide an explanation of the preferred plan and the financially constrained plan in the TSP. If you've got questions, I would like to call on John if he could just touch on this. He's standing by.
And thanks, Kevin. So throughout the plan, and I know in Kevin's presentation, you're going to hear references to preferred projects or preferred project list in a financially constrained project or project list. So just want to kind of explain the difference and the significance of those lists. When we talk about the preferred projects, it's really, it's every project in the TSP. So it's kind of the wishlist or the master plan of everything you do, you know, if funding were no option. And then the financially constrained project list, it's just a collection or subset of those preferred planned projects that can reasonably be expected to be funded by the end of the planning period, and which is in this case, the year 2040, given the types and amounts of anticipated funding. So it's limited by some kind of, you know, financial reality. And the significance of that are why we have a financially constrained plan, among, you know, other reasons. One is, we're required to have it by the transportation planning role. So it just tells us that TSPs need to include a funding plan, which really is that exercise of, you know, not just having the wishlist of projects, but having some lens of a financial reality and saying, well, among those, what could we, do we think we could actually get done in the next 20 years? And really, the way that gets used is if anyone is proposing to do a plan or land use regulation amendment, you know, classically, you know, really, it's what comes up when someone wants to do a zone change. As part of that, they have to do a traffic impact study, and that study has to do a 20-year look, and it looks at what the potential traffic impact is from changing that zoning. And when they do that, you can assume that any projects that are on the financially constrained list will be in place within that 20 years to help kind of offset or absorb some of that traffic impact. But you can't do that with any other project in the TSP, only the ones on the financially constrained list. So that's really the, probably the primarily, and maybe the only way you'll see that really come into play. Other than that, just a couple of key notes. You're not really limited by your financial constraint list when it comes to constructing projects. You can still fund or construct any project anytime, whether it's on that financially constrained list or not, because sometimes just opportunities come up, new funding sources you didn't anticipate, so you can take advantage of those. And then also, from what financially constrained project lists are often used to populate capital improvement programs, your capital improvement programs are not limited to financially constrained projects.
Thank you, John. Okay, I'm going to move forward, and councilors, I understand you may have some additional questions, and John will remain with us for the duration of this discussion. On March 9th, staff recommendations were provided for projects to be included in the TSP's financially constrained plan. These recommendations were reviewed by the Planning Commission during their last hearing, and they are included in the cover sheet for tonight's hearing packet. I've been referring to the list of projects that can be funded with existing sources as the shortlist. A broader list of projects is recommended, but it can only be used for the financially constrained plan if the city can direct more funding to these improvements. Before completing the TSP amendments, council is being asked to confirm which list of projects will be used. In order to provide a more thorough network of improvements, including for pedestrians and cyclists, staff in the Planning Commission recommend use of the broader list of projects if sufficient additional funding can be made available. The broader list of projects appears to be supportable by increasing the city's transportation SDC from its current $2,059 to approximately $4,900, for a single-family dwelling and an equivalent increase for other types of uses. Keep in mind, transportation STCs must be based on specific projects and cost estimates in the TSP, and STCs aren't collected overnight. It takes time to build up STCs to fund projects. The commission supported a transportation SDC of up to $4,900 because it appears to be middle of the road compared with other cities in Oregon. However, due to concerns about housing affordability, staff in the commission recommend evaluating feasibility of a different SDC methodology using a tiered approach with lower charges for homes with less square footage and higher charges for homes with greater square footage. To pay for transportation system improvements, the commission does not recommend relying primarily on STCs, which are paid exclusively by new homes and businesses. Staff and the commission recommend evaluating feasibility of coupling an increased SDC with other funding sources. If the council supports financially constrained plan with a broader list of projects through increasing transportation STCs, perhaps coupled with other sources, staff may be able to evaluate an SDC increase and the current SDC methodology by expanding the scope of the current utility rate and SDC study. With that, here is a map of what I've referred to as the shortlist of recommended financially constrained projects based on existing revenue sources valued at about $15.6 million over that planning horizon that John talked about through 2040. The purple circles indicate intersection improvements. Red lines are trail improvements. Pink indicates sidewalk, and purple lines indicate bike facilities. This was prepared based on recommendations from the consulting team, city engineering, city planning, as well as public feedback. It includes projects such as a roundabout at the intersection of Cascade and Mount Adams, signalization of Second and Oak using urban renewal funds, easements for a couple of segments of trail, including along a portion of Henderson Creek and a sidewalk on one side of Rand Road north of May Street. There are a couple of bike improvement projects near the middle school and a few street crossing projects as well. This list addresses a key pedestrian project by including right-of-way only for a portion of the Henderson Creek Trail that would result in a complete connection between Sherman Avenue and the south boundary of the urban growth boundary. This also includes a couple of bike projects near the middle school that we think could be coupled with safe routes to schools projects. And I can describe the others if you would like, but they are included in the next list and the next map, which is the broader list of projects. So with that, are there any questions about this map at this time? Okay, I'll move forward then, and we'll talk about the broader list. This map adds to the shortlist and depicts staff recommendations for a broader financially constrained project list with about $18.6 million in additional funding needed. It does not include recommendations for the Heights Urban Renewal District area or the historic Columbia River Highway State Trail, because they will be reviewed in separate projects. And it stops well short of funding all recommendations from the Westside Area Concept Plan Report, which require about $60 million additional dollars. But it includes projects that are critical for growth, such as funding a portion of the cost of right-of-way and improvements for West Side Drive between Wine Country Avenue and May Street. And it addresses the 2020 work plan strategy of emphasizing updates to the pedestrian, bicycle, and trails projects during this TSP amendment by adding path improvements for a segment of Henderson Creek, a path between the intersection of Frankton at Post Canyon and Belmont Avenue, sidewalks and bike lanes on May Street between Frankton and Rand, sidewalks on one side of both 18th and 22nd Streets and others that I can describe if you would like. The added pedestrian and bike projects include a mix of off-street trails and paths, sidewalks and bike lanes on some of the busier collector streets, as well as bike routes on less busy streets, all of which help create a more connected network. As explained in the packet, there are a variety of potential funding sources that could be used, including increasing transportation STCs to about $4,900 for a single-family dwelling. Attachment F to the cover sheet is a list of transportation STCs from about 20 other cities in Oregon for reference. Given the council's housing goals and concerns about housing affordability, staff does recommend that a transportation SDC methodology is evaluated along with other STCs. Council could also evaluate feasibility of other funding sources, such as tax increment financing, bonds, and urban renewal. Or council could direct staff to immediately increase transportation STCs to fund this list of projects. In any case, the broader financially constrained plan only can be included in the TSP if it's reasonably likely that funding will be available. I'd be happy to answer any questions about this list of projects and the TSP amendments in general before you take testimony. If you've got questions about funding options, we may need to hear from Rachel, Will, or John Baskett. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. Kevin, you gave us at least two numbers. You gave us, how many millions was it going to be for the first list?
It's valued at about $15.6 million.
And then the second list, the larger list, was how much?
It adds about $18.6 to that.
Oh, additional.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Would you like me to stop the screen share, or is it helpful to keep this up?
I think just keep it up for now. We might, you know, this is, this is the whole, this is the whole deal here on this last one. So if we need, we might need to go back, but I think we're not exactly into deliberations yet. This would just be for additional questions for Kevin right now, because we have to take public testimonies first. Do you have any additional questions right at this moment? Let's go with Mark and then Megan.
Thanks. Kevin, how much flexibility do we have over time? Because, you know, this, the time window is pretty long. Does councils have the ability to prioritize things that aren't on this fiscally constrained list and work on other things as opportunities arise or priorities change?
Yeah, I think what we heard from John Baskett is that, yeah, even if projects are not included on what we're referring to as the financially constrained plan, if there are funding sources that become available that we aren't aware of right now, we can tackle those other projects that remain on our longer preferred plan. Does that answer the question?
I think so. Does it?
One other thing I might mention is that, you know, we talked a little bit about Heights Urban Renewal, Historic Columbia River Highway Streetscape Project, Safe Routes to Schools Plans. There are these other things that are happening that may result in some additional TSP amendments down the road. So there will be some other opportunities to come back and look at this financially constrained list, modify it.
And you could do, just one more quick question. You can do partial stuff, like you could do land acquisition but not development, and any schedule that we want to do that, is that right?
Might ask John to jump in on this one, but it's my understanding that the funds that we have, or the, yes, the cost estimates that we have here for these improvements include, in some cases, land acquisition, for example, in association with West Side Drive. In others, they are completely capital improvement, maybe, you know, a new sidewalk or striping for a bike lane or something like that, not, not right-of-way. But it's my understanding that we're collecting funds for both right-of-way and improvements, and yes, that you would have the flexibility to use those funds and direct them at the projects that are on the financially constrained plan.
Okay, thanks. I understood what you said a second ago, is we could use funds to, to, let's say, get acquisition for, you know, a future road because the opportunity presents, even if it's not on the constrained projects list.
If there were another source of funding that became available to do that, and the project was not on the financially constrained plan, yes.
Okay. Megan?
Yeah, Kevin, I think you did touch on this, but I guess I just want to be really explicitly clear. Given the number of comments on like 12th and 13th, this plan update is not addressing any of that, but they're, you know, assuming changes were needed after all the Heights project. That would be a separate TSP update, correct?
That's our expectation. Yeah, it's very likely that in association with the Heights Streetscape Plan, there will be some recommendations that will that will lead to some additional TSP amendments. And we'll have to see how, what the project list looks like and how much funding is available through urban renewal, but yes, correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions right now? Okay. I just wanted to, a couple of things. I wanted to state that I personally don't have any conflicts of interest, because I think I asked everyone else if they did, and they said no. But I also do not have any conflicts of interest. And then I need to let the audience challenge anyone if they think we have a conflict of interest at this point. So I'm going to try and look at the participants and see if anyone has their hand up in that regard. And this is just for conflicts of interest. There is one hand up. I think it's Jody Behr.
Mayor, I think that Jody's hand has been raised for quite some time since prior to this presentation.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
Okay, well, we're doing just conflicts of interest right now. Did you have a question about that? No, looks like not. Okay. So next, we will do public testimony, and I know Mari Ruth Petzing had signed up for that. She's still there. Oh, I see she's here. Can you put her on, Jonathan?
And Mayor McBride, I'd also just want to mention that most of the written testimony that you've received is in the packet. There's not a lot of it. There were four pieces. And then we did receive again some additional testimony today from Thrive Hood River.
Go ahead, Mari Ruth.
Thank you. This is Mari Ruth Petzing. I'm at 1800.
Thank you. This is Mari Ruth Petzing. I'm at eighteen oh six Avalon Drive in Hood River. I want to speak to you tonight to address equity and the public comment process. I recognize and appreciate that there was an attempt to reach the Hispanic and Latinx community. I also see that there were three respondents who identified as Latinx and as far as I can tell, no responses in Spanish. It didn't work. I see this a lot. And instead of measuring actual equity, we are instead satisfied with a failed attempt. If it doesn't work, try something else. Make a commitment to get a certain percentage or number of responses or testimony from Hispanic or Latinx individuals, a certain amount in Spanish, and don't move forward with these plan amendments until you get that. Sending emails to local leaders is a great idea and something we should do, but it isn't Gladys's responsibility to get Latinx participation. It isn't Juan or Nubia or Ellie or Letty's job. It's the city's job and all of our job as a community. If the city has goals to have an equitable and inclusive community, an informed and engaged community. If the city adopted a resolution for racial and social equity and resolved to seek input from individuals and communities impacted by racism and other social disparities, it must be the city's job to ensure that voices are actually heard. I'm not an expert on community outreach and engagement, but I can tell you it starts, of course, with having a more diverse transportation plan, transportation system plan advisory committee and planning commission. Although I would like to acknowledge the many, many hours of volunteer work by the committee members and their service to all of us in the community. I think it's necessary to do direct specific outreach to Latinx communities. I also think you can do more general outreach in ways that are likely to get a more representative sample. If you know that one of the most critical areas is the Rand and Cascade intersection, stand outside of Walmart. Offer a five dollar gift certificate or a free concha for all I care. If you know that twelfth and thirteenth are a major area of concern, canvas the businesses on those streets. You could speak to folks at Ortigosa Auto Repair and Juanita's Market and Novedades de Potrillo and the Taqueria. Partner with a civics teacher at a high school to present to students and have them take the survey in class. There are lots of options and an expert would know way better than I. But please take the Goals and Equity Pledge seriously and do not move forward until you have met a base level of equitable community input. On a personal note, I would like to express some disappointment about the disproportionate investment in terms of dollars in motor vehicles as opposed to pedestrian, bike and public transit as opposed to number of projects. Looking at the different estimates, looks like seventy to ninety percent of funds go to motor vehicle projects. Climate change is a crisis of unimaginable proportions and we need to stop investing in infrastructure to support single occupancy vehicles and instead invest in the sustainable and healthy future now. It will not magically appear unless we build it. I would like to say I'm very excited to see sidewalks added to Rand Road, which I think is critical, and the crossing at Thirteenth and State, which is also badly needed on the shortlist. And I support additional funding for increased sidewalks especially. Thank you very much for your time.
Mayor, Mayor, I believe you're muted.
Sorry about that. Again, thank you, Mari Ruth. I wanted to make sure that there wasn't anyone else that wanted to do testimony for the Transportation System Plan.
Jody's hand was up. I bet this is when she wanted to say something, so.
Okay, let's see if we can.
Mayor, there is also another hand up by Claudia.
Okay. Let's have Jody. She had had her hand up earlier. If she, is she still wanting to speak?
Okay, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. Yeah, go ahead, Jody.
And it was a mistake earlier, but I sent an email in response to my question there. And I haven't pre-prepared for this, but just listening to the discussions, I just wanted to add that we, there's so many projects in the city that are needed that, I mean, I'm in support of everything that was, that Kevin talked about, but we have to balance all of these different project needs. And one of the things that I have seen, and I'll have to look back in my notes, what I have seen is we have built, we have had developers build sidewalks to nowhere because that was the, the street typical section for that, whatever the designation of that street was in front of their development, when instead we could have had money from that developer for that sidewalk that was going nowhere to use in another part of the city for a sidewalk that is really needed. And I know that there is cities on the west side of Portland. I think it's Beaverton, Hillsborough. I'm not sure. I'll look into that. That use a program like that, that would be useful for us to start implementing so that we, so that all of the monies that are being invested in the streetscape of Hood River are going to the most important projects. Anyway, that's what I have to say today. Thank you. Oh, and I'm at four twelve, Tenth Street in Hood River.
Next is Claudia.
Hi, guys. I'm also not prepared for the speech. And I'm in the middle of bedtime with my kiddo, so I'm going to be really quick. Jody, I totally echo your statement about roads and sidewalks. It's nowhere. It sucks. I emailed a couple of you guys on this topic. I'm just going to reiterate it for the sake of public comment. I think it's a really good opportunity to sunset the downtown urban renewal zone and create a new one on the west side of town to and up to you guys to decide what projects of so-called public value you'd like to fund that way, but it seems like a good opportunity given the amount of vacant developable land on the west side and the enormous funding gap and the idea that downtown is perhaps prime for sunset. And I think perhaps Will Norris could talk about the process of this a little bit more, but just something for you guys to consider. Thanks.
Thank you, Claudia. Is there anyone else with their hand up, Jonathan, that looks like they wanted to speak?
No, Mayor, there are more hands up.
Okay.
Mayor McBride, if I could jump in just.
Yeah, I was just going to see if you had any other comments, Kevin.
Sure. I appreciate the testimony. When the council is ready to deliberate, the hearing can be closed. Again, prior to finalizing the TSP amendments, we are asking council to determine whether funding for projects will be based upon existing revenue sources resulting in the shortlist or if it's likely that additional revenue will be generated to fund a broader list of projects such as through increasing transportation SDCs. If deliberation will not occur tonight, the hearing should be continued to April twenty sixth. As explained on the cover sheet in the packet, if the council is ready to proceed with deliberation, staff can be directed to prepare an ordinance to be reviewed and read for the first time during the council's meeting on April twenty sixth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Let's just do a time check. Because the next thing would be to close the hearing and that would be all the public testimony we would have. And then we would begin deliberation. So it is about seven forty right now. And let's just look at the agenda. We have. I think if everybody's good, we can go forward. Let's just go forward. Is everybody thinking we're good on this? Go forward and deliberate on this this evening? I don't see any shaking heads, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public testimony for the hearing this evening. And we will go ahead and deliberate this evening. Does anyone want to start? I think we have. The questions are, are we going to go forward with the first list? Or are we going to try and figure out how to pay for the bigger list? That's kind of the biggest, the biggest question of the evening that we're talking about. Megan?
I guess with that, my, my question for, for Kevin is, do we need to just say we want to find money, but we don't need to decide what the mechanism or mechanisms are for that tonight?
Big question, Counselor Saunders. I might look to, to Rachel and John Baskin if they could jump in and just give us a bit of cert, more certainty on how far we need to go with committing to find that additional revenue.
Yeah, thank you very much for the question, Counselor. Under the statute, it needs to be under the planning rule. It needs to be reasonably likely. So we would be looking for consistent and clear direction from council as to a funding source.
Okay. And the one, one that has been suggested, or actually the one that has been recommended by staff is to go with the additional SDC charges and at four thousand nine hundred dollars per single-family dwelling. And that would be up from two thousand fifty nine dollars. So that was what the numbers that were used by staff and that was the recommendation given by staff at this point.
And Mayor, just to clarify, SDCs do need to have a rational nexus to the service that is being provided. So what we're recommending is that we, that we put this transportation SDC into your SDC study so that we can look at whether or not there's a methodology that we can use that will also accomplish your housing goals. So we can't say for certain that it would be forty nine hundred dollars per single family, but we had to have a range to plug in to give you a scope of magnitude from which to make a decision.
Great. Thank, thank you so much. Questions on what we're doing or specifics on the two plans? Anything additional or you want to just jump in with where you are on it? Mark, looks like he's ready to go. Eric? Go ahead, Mark.
I was just going to say I'm fully supportive of us going forward with the SDC investigation with it going up. You know, Kevin brought up some good points about, you know, me and Rachel did too about, you know, how does it an increase also feed into our housing affordability, things footprint related and stuff. So I just wanted to say I'm hip to that and the additional funding constrained projects list. And then I have maybe as a second lap, when we get to it, I have a couple bones to pick in the current constrained list, so.
Okay, Eric?
I had a question. And that is, I heard that one of the public folks who testified mentioned this possibility of an alternative funding source of an urban renewal district on the west side. And it does look like most of the arrows are sort of generally on the west side. I was just wondering if, because it's in a real, I'm in a real hard spot to second guess something this detailed and I'm not intending to second guess anything. But I just wondered if that idea was considered and rejected or, or whether it was considered at all.
Counselor, any others mentioned real quickly that, that it is a, a concept that we have talked about as staff, but no more than a concept, not gotten into any depth?
And Counselor, if that was something that, that the city council wanted to entertain for a, a variety of it, to provide a variety of fill a number of infrastructure gaps, there would be a distinct process that the city would need to go through to, to do that. Certainly something the organization could, could take on and investigate as a project in a future year. Along with, I mean, I, I just to add, there are a number of other options for funding transportation improvements as well, such as a local area. Option levy, you know, and Kevin's outlined those. So I think what we're hoping to do is sort of understand, you know, what scope of magnitude you want to try to fund at this point, give you a starting place, and then we could certainly look at what the other important gaps and projects are and come up with some strategies for those.
Jessica?
Yeah, I will add that I, I like the idea of using the broader list and coming up with ideas of how to fund it. I would be open to raising the SDCs and like the suggestion of including it in our, our SDC study as suggested by staff. Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Tim?
Well, let's briefly say gito to that.
Megan, did you ever hand up?
I was telling Tim I couldn't hear him, but since I'm unmuted now, I will talk. So I, yeah, in general, support the longer list of projects. That's obviously all important work that should be done. I think I, you know, raising the SDC sum makes sense to me. And if we're going to do that, I certainly would love to see it in the SDC study. I, I guess I do feel like quite a bit of the project list includes things that we would need to do now with or without future development. And I do feel we're putting all of that cost onto SDC new development and not spreading it amongst people that already are using or needing these projects. So I guess I'd love to see that we're coupling SDCs with some other funding sources.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Rachel.
Counselor, thank you for that question. SDCs can only be used for capacity expanding projects. So staff does have to go through an analysis of how much is, you know, a repair and maintenance and how much is capacity expanding. So for example, on the Rand Road project, Rand and Cascade, a certain proportion of that is eligible for SDCs, but not the entire thing.
Thank you, Rachel. I guess even beyond, you know, so a lot of these projects are expanding capacity, but I guess I'm, I'm also thinking a lot of them need that expanded capacity already without whatever the new, you know, building would be. So it's like some of the people that already exist and need that expanded capacity should maybe also be paying for it.
Are you asking, Megan, if we have a level of service in certain areas that is so low that we need to repair them without any new houses? Is that what you're saying? Is that what you're asking?
I don't think I'm asking anything, but I, I guess, you know, some of this is the like, yeah, but you know, oh, we should have bike lanes on May Street or we want a connecting street here like that. Not all of that is based on just new development from here going forward. Is, is my understanding of the town and maybe I'm wrong. So I guess it's like, I, I do think there's value in raising the SDC because that is obviously an important mechanism and makes sense for new capacity. And also I, I would like it to not just be on new development. Assuming.
But, but looking at a local improvement district or looking at urban renewal or those kind of things that everyone would be contributing to.
Yeah, I would, I guess, and I don't know how much I need to decide tonight, but I would like to see we're coupling costs between different users.
And you're in favor of the larger list. That's what you said. Correct? Okay.
I'm in favor of the larger list as well.
Okay, great. Glad, Gladys. I'm also in favor of the larger list. I'm also, I want to mimic, I think Jessica Mark and Megan all said it for sure to try and figure out if there is a sliding scale that can be used for smaller homes. You know, I, 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 things that, to try and keep the affordable homes still affordable if possible, but I'm in favor of the larger list. I don't believe you've ever added a larger list previously. We've just used, we've kind of gone along like we, like we've always been saying, well, wouldn't it be wonderful to have this, this bike lane or that street better, whatever. And we just kind of don't get a lot very quickly. And I think it's kind of our opportunity here with the expansion and the projected growth that we get those amenities put in. So I'm, I'm in favor of it too. Eric, did you have a comment?
Yes, I'm in favor of the larger list and I also appreciate that our SDCs kind of in the statewide level are. And I also appreciate that our SDCs kind of on the statewide level are at the lower end. That was a point I saw in the updated staff report. I guess I sort of am feeling the same feeling that Counselor Saunders was having about wanting to spread it out a little bit, because we are, it looked like roughly 100% increase in the SDC. So that is a big percentage jump up. I mean, we've got to pay for it somehow. But, you know, I was thinking, for example, there's apparently issues on the crosswalk between 12th or 13th and State. There's probably not going to be a lot of new development happening there. So that feels like a, an issue that, and I'm not frankly sure how it all taps into one particular project and development down the way. But in any event, I guess what I'm trying to state is I'd be open to other funding sources. And I'm not sure exactly what we're deciding tonight. It's part of my hesitation, if we're just being kind of wedded completely to SDC updates. But having an open mind for other funding sources seems wise. And considering some of these other options for funding seems wise, which I'm sure would have already occurred to city staff. So I guess what I'm trying to say is I like the longer list and would like to remain open to considering a diverse stock of funding sources.
Thanks, Eric. We do have a motion on, can you find the page for me?
Or just be, let me be right back. Yeah, there were actually three potential motions.
Right, right, yeah. They're on page, I believe they're on page five. Yeah, it is on page five. So let's see if we're, Mark, you had some additional things that you wanted to bring up first.
I just want to float it and see if anyone else is interested in talking about it. That if we're gonna have the broader constraint list, which I support, I personally would advocate that P-19, P-20, and P-4 are more important than MV-4.1, which is, you know, an expensive road next to Orchard that just isn't developed yet. So I'm hesitant to even bring it up, just because it's semi-fictional and, you know, the future is going to bring what the future brings. But, but it, by showing these trail networks that we've been talking about for so long, I think that it nods to that being a priority for us. And, and so that's, that's my recommendation is to complete P-19, P-20, and P-4 instead of MV-4.1 on the, on the list. I think that they're lower dollar per linear foot, too, so.
Sorry, I'm bad with the, that our number combo. Is this, you want the three trail segments more than the extension of 30th?
Say, say it again.
The letter number combo I'm having trouble with. So are you saying you would prefer that the three trail segments get done more than the extension of 30th?
So on Attachment D, the MV-4.1 is the extension of 30th between Belmont and the non-existent road, I guess, near Rocky Road. See, see that little orange line? That piece.
Okay, but the things you did want was like Henderson Creek Trail?
Yeah, connecting, so 19 connects down to near our new property. 20 is the ridgeline trail that basically goes from Frankton to about our new property. And 4 goes from our new property over to 20th. So, and it's best seen on packet two, page 249.
It does look like P-4 is included on our broader list.
It, it, it might be, I just, it's not on the map part of it.
It's on the.
It's on. Attachment E, I see it there, yeah, P-4.
Attachment E? I don't have an attachment E.
Page 11 of the packet. Of the first.
Oh, it's, so it's, it's, it's in the text but not on the drawing.
West side immediately south of May.
So maybe, Kevin, I guess.
I'm looking at the map for the broader list, and I see P-4 between Main Street and the Southern UGB. That's basically, that, that is Rocky Road. And what this is suggesting is paying for a sidewalk on one side of the street only.
Right.
And some additional right-of-way purchase on the west side immediately south of Main Street, where there's a width constraint.
Right.
So.
So it's, P-4 winds from the end of Rocky Road all the way through our site and all the way over to 20th Street. And I guess I was saying, continuing that. It seemed funny to me that, that we were talking about the Rand Road property, and there's a major trail connection, and it's not on, it's not on our list. So, so that's what I'm advocating for.
P-20 is the ridgeline trail. You're right, you don't see it on either of the maps right now.
And the, and the road, I think it's the extension of Wine Country is not on this list either that would go through the city property.
That's correct. None of the neighborhood connector streets are depicted on the map, nor any other local street.
Okay, we're going with the major ones first.
Yeah, yeah. And the idea on the major ones is, is still not purchasing all of the right-of-way and not paying for all of the improvements, but going over and above what would be required for a local street. So the development community, the expectation is they pay for a 50-foot-wide right-of-way and street improvements. And then the city is a partner to expand the width, additional right-of-way, and center turn lanes as needed on those major roads.
So, Mark, you're trying to advocate basically for the connector trails instead of P-4, P-4.1?
Well.
Or MV-4.1?
Yes. And there's a question of, you know, I don't, I obviously didn't do any math that says the dollars for M4.1 can pay for how much, how many feet of trail?
I guess I just have a question for staff. Was there a reason that these particular, that the choices remained the way they were in relationship to what Mark's asking about?
Well, the specifically, the extension of 30th Street from its current southern terminus down to Belmont, that's Project MV-4.1. It was found to be a critical need as the city grows, according to the traffic impact analyses that were prepared. So that, that's, that's essentially why it is on that list. I thought, I maybe wait, I shouldn't frame it this way, but Counselors Ann Miller, why is the ridgeline trail not on the map? It seemed a bit more discretionary. But clearly, there is a great deal of public interest in off-street trails.
And, and I guess I'm hypothesizing that with the 2040 window that this covers, that, that $3 million at MV-4.1 is, is, it's not ready to give birth yet, so that.
I haven't spoken with the Hanners recently. I don't know what their plans are.
Yeah, neither, yeah.
I would note, as long as I'm talking, that I know this is your deliberation. I'd jump in real quickly. For the Planning Commission, P-19, the Henderson Creek Trail, was thought to be a very important project. And neither of these lists funds it completely. And again, in the shortlist, we see just some right-of-way from the Southern UGB up to a point north of Main Street, where it could connect to an existing easement. And then in the broader list, it does include funding for paving that trail segment. So basically, creating a connection between Sherman and the Southern UGB, but not north of Sherman.
And I guess I have one other question about trails. I know trails and parks are something that Oregon State Parks is, the state is, has an interest in, and also other nonprofits in helping fund, like they did fund the, oh, the one at Nichols Basin, I think to the tune of $450,000 or something like that. And so do you think there is some more possibilities to getting funding in the, from those pots of money when it comes to trails?
Rachel, maybe you would like to jump in? I can't speak to that. Again, I think what we're trying to do is to put together a list with sources that are reasonably likely to be available, and sometimes it's difficult to count on grants.
Okay.
I would agree with that statement. If certainly Oregon State Parks is a source that we could look at as a community to fund something, but it is not something that, and no grant funds are anything I would recommend that we, that we take as reasonably likely.
Okay. All right. I, I am, I mean, I hear you, Mark. But I guess I'm okay with this list for, you know, the large list.
I mean, it's, what I asked before and what I understand is that this is the list that we, you know, use for our SDC things, but then as opportunities come up and priorities change, we can, we can make acquisition of that trail network a higher priority without having to go back to the TSPs. True, Kevin?
Correct, yeah, that's my understanding.
So it's all, it's sort of.
Alternatively, Counselors Ann Miller, if we wanted to include one or more of those projects on our broader list, if we were relying exclusively on SDCs, the consequence would be a higher SDC. I just haven't done the math to know where that would land.
Yeah, I guess I, I, I obviously like the message it gives to the public that we take these greenways seriously by it being a priority item. I think that I will push for it free, being a priority item, whether it's, whether it's on this list or not. So, so I, I don't see lots of, yeah, go marks. So maybe that's the end of this little bit, so.
Megan, did you have something?
I guess to Mark's point, I'm, you know, kind of using the other parts of our brain, knowing we've got, you know, master plan and hopefully, you know, project list, priority project list coming up and all these things of like, would it be better to be prioritizing from the like trails, open space, greenway perspective, the sections that aren't going to be funded through this TSP as the connectors, you know, between the Henderson chunks that are here? Or does that, is that irrelevant? Like, is that a way to get to Mark's thing of like, we're working on it from multiple angles to get to the same, you know, connected system?
Are you asking that to Kevin?
I don't, I mean, maybe, but I guess, you know, I think this is the like, this TSP doesn't stand alone, given all the other work we're doing. So I'm wondering if that, like, is that a reasonable assumption of some of this is in this transportation aspect? Some of it may be considered, you know?
We're gonna try to turn over every money rock we can, right? Yeah, so.
Counselor Saunders, I probably shouldn't suggest this, but working with the Parks District may be another option for some of the off-street improvements.
And I think that's, Kevin, consistent with what we talked about at the last meeting or the meeting before, when it came to, you know, Parks and Rec funding. So I think that's consistent with what we talked about. All right, there's a motion on page five. And I think we've all kind of already agreed to the suggested motion, which is the first one.
Sorry, just question to, you know, the comment we got about the arterial bike lane thing. Is that something we need to address tonight, or?
About the what?
So Heather's comment about the bike lane, you know, you could do it. It's instead of one being on-street, one being off, you could do two-way off. I'm not explaining this well, Kevin.
Thank you, Counselor Saunders. So we had some additional written testimony that came in today from Thrive Wood River. And there's a recommendation to modify the design of the minor arterial cross-section that we're recommending to include more width for a two-way bike facility on one side of the road. I did reach out to Heather State briefly this afternoon, just to check and make sure I understood the concept. And it was to eliminate buffered bike lane from one side and basically add some width to the opposite side in terms of pavement to create roughly a 16-foot-wide two-way bike lane in addition to a five-to-six-foot-wide sidewalk. It's quite, it's a lot of improvement. And certainly for a very busy and very active bike network connection, that would be the Cadillac. One thing that the design didn't take into consideration is in some sections of that particular street, this is between May and Wine Country, we're going to need a center turn lane at intersections. And so that creates a conflict. We would need some additional right-of-way to accommodate a portion of the improvement that was recommended by Thrive.
And sorry, this is my own clarity, but the recommendation from Thrive would be a wider cross-section than the current proposed arterial?
It actually, it's very similar in the sections of the street that are just too paved, too travel lanes wide. The overall width wouldn't change much. But in the sections where we need a center turn lane would create some, we would need to get some additional right-of-way to make that work. And we haven't done the cost estimates. And in that particular area, given the slopes, widening things a little bit can have a pretty dramatic impact in certain locations. There are a couple of steep slopes in that section of the street, so.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
I will move that we approve the TSP amendments, including use of the broader project list for the financially constrained plan under direct staff to prepare and implementing ordinance.
I second that motion.
We have a motion from Jessica and a second by Gladys to approve the TSP amendments included with use of the broader project list for the financially constrained plan and direct staff to prepare and implementing ordinance. Any additional discussion? I don't see anyone. Roll call vote. Oh, Tim?
I just wanted to mention that, you know, I agree with, with Mark that those, those trails are important. And so I'm hoping that, you know, we can find some way in the future to bonus. So that was my go mark. Go.
Thanks, thanks, Tim, for your comment. Go ahead with vote now, Megan?
Yes.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Tim? Eric? Gladys?
Hi.
Chair votes, yes. All right, we have amended TSP.
Thank you, Mayor and Counselors. Appreciate your time, thank you so much.
Thank you. It is 8:10, and I know we still have lots of fun items on our agenda, but let's take a five-minute break and be back at 8:15. It is eight ten, and I know we still have lots of fun items on our agenda, but let's take a five minute break and be back at eight fifteen. Okay, it looks like we have everyone back. You guys hear me? Okay. All right, that is was the end of our public hearing for the transportation system plan. And so I'm going to open the work session. Do we have any additions or corrections?
We do not, and no items today, Mayor.
No items today. So we'll go ahead and adjourned our work session because we don't have anything for that. And we will open our regular council meeting. Any agenda additions or corrections for our regular meeting?
No, Mayor, there are none.
Okay. We have a consent agenda with three items on it. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Do I have any questions? Or does anyone need to have anything taken off of the consent agenda?
I don't know if it needs to be removed, but I just had one edit to the. For March twenty ninth. On page forty-three of the packet. Second, second thing from the bottom, site area requirements for dwelling unit eight hundred square feet in R one. It says the majority of council agreed to keep it as drafted and. By recollection in the code we have tonight, it says that we agreed to change it. To a smaller. Floor area. I'm going to butcher this, but.
Counselor, if I could, Jen will go back and listen to that and we'll bring we'll bring them back. My so my suggestion is that we approve it without those minutes and we'll bring it back.
So we'll we'll remove the March twenty ninth minutes from the consent agenda this evening and we'll look at those again.
Awesome. Then I would moodly approve the consent agenda as amended.
One second.
Megan's made a motion and Tim has seconded to approve the consent agenda. As amended with the removal of the March twenty ninth minutes. Roll call vote. Jessica?
Hi.
Megan? Eric?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Gladys?
Hi.
Chair votes, yes. All right. Regular business items, Resolution twenty twenty-one oh four, setting utility rates effective July first.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor McBride and members of the city council. Resolution twenty-one twenty-two one dash oh four. It's really the culmination of three special meetings that we held. On utility rates at the beginning of March. And so what what those meetings did was set a new five-year rate plan, picking up where the city's last five-year rate plan left off. And the plan is constructed to raise the the necessary money needed to support our utility operations as well as our planned capital improvements. The resolution you have in front of you is designed to increase water and sewer revenues by three percent and then stormwater revenues by fourteen percent next year. The plan, the way that the rates are constructed is also meant to incrementally move us into better alignment between the charges that we. That we ask our users to pay versus the impact that those user classes have on the system. And so. While we're increasing while we're increasing revenue by three percent in the water and sewer and by fourteen percent in stormwater. That's done by with the majority of the increase coming from non-residential users and the most high-impact users. So as in the stormwater utility, we're going to be switching to charging based on area of impervious surface. Versus just meter size, which is much more closely. Aligns with a parcel's impact on our stormwater system. And then lastly, the. Resolution also memorializes an expansion of the low-income utility assistance program. Acknowledging that we've missed folks that are on shared meter in the past, and you're going to be now extending those low-income discounts. To folks to residential households that meet the income requirements, but are otherwise on a shared meter with other utility accounts by crediting other utility bills that they have. And. Lastly, it includes Councilor Zandler's amendment to hold keep septa- septage dumping costs flat. So without asking me, I'll answer any questions that the council may have. Oh, Mayor McBride, you're on mute.
I don't see anyone raising their hand. Any more questions for Will? We had so much discussion on this. It's such a thorough presentation previously that. I think that's why we don't have too many questions because we really. Went over this thoroughly previously. So thank you. Well. If we don't have any questions, there is a motion on page fifty-six of our packet.
I move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh four, establishing utility rates effective July first, two thousand twenty-one.
I will second.
Kate, you're on mute.
Kate?
We're still on it.
Okay, I got it. I'm gonna just. Leave it off. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four, establishing utility rates effective July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one. I think Megan made that motion and Tim seconded it. Any more?
Round.
The other way around. Okay.
I seconded.
Okay. It's late. Any more discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Jessica?
Hi.
Megan?
Yes.
Tim? Mark?
Yes.
Eric?
Hi.
Gladys?
Hi.
Chair votes, aye. Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Good work, Will.
Nice job, Will.
Man, we've done a lot of work in the last. We we the council, we the staff, the staff has just been workhorses in this last year with all of these things that we've done. I mean, I. It I just have to say thank you so much to the whole staff, bringing all this stuff forward. I mean, this is so much work to get this many things done in this shorter period of time. So. Really appreciate it. All right, next we have. Ordinance twenty sixty-one, middle housing code, file twenty twenty dash thirty-seven. Dustin.
Thank you, Mayor. Directed by council, we prepared ordinance twenty sixty-one for first reading tonight. And this ordinance includes a number of clarifications that were deliberated and arrived upon at your last meeting. And they're outlined in the cover sheet and there's thirteen points of clarification that I've listed, including some other items. Just for grammar and changes. So if you have any particular questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. The ordinance has been posted and I believe is also in the packet as well. So if you have any questions, I I'm here for for your deliberations for.
Hey, thank you. I just had one. Thanks for all these corrections. It looks pretty pretty clean to me this time. It looks really good. Just one little thing on page seventy-five of our packet. The top drawing. We have the height for the roof. We have twenty-one foot maximum. And then we have five foot maximum and those two add up to twenty-six. But then we have twenty-five written on the side. That's the only thing I could see. I. Were we supposed to be twenty-six altogether in maximum there?
We didn't max it out. I noticed that as well. And I actually spoke to a couple of people about this. It provides a little different opportunity and a little more flexibility. I don't think it's it's not incongruent.
Okay.
If you if you had more or less pitch and slope, it could still work. It just twenty-five is the max to the upper ridge and twenty-one's the the max to the lowest. If we had a if you had a lower eve, which is pretty possible, if you had a shed with a greater slope to it, it actually does. It still works.
It still works. Okay, all right. I just, the other ones added up. And so I just thought, does that need to add up? But I can see what you're talking about it. It doesn't need to. Okay, that's the only question I had. Others? Megan?
I am going to start with just the changes and edits. I love the new chart on page sixty-nine because it's way more readable. So I'm super excited. The one thing, and this may be more a question for council, but. So instead of, you know, I think last meeting we had said, we just want to not allow short terminals in the C one zone. And then, you know, staff came back and said, well, this just is hard to not allow or to do primary residence. And so I'm down for it, you know, to Tim's point last meeting of. Allowing it as a primary residence, it gives some extra income potentially, but I'm wondering if we wanted to also make sure it has to follow the other rules about like the ninety-day cap and other things that we require for the residential zone. To really just make it consistent. And which which would be my preference, I guess.
I was reading that's that is that it would have to meet all the regular STR stuff. With the addition of. In C one also requiring that it have the it be the principal residence.
That was how I read it, too. Where is that section? Look at that again.
Shoot, where was that?
It's page seventy-seven.
Dustin, can you clarify page seven?
That's correct. That's the right page.
And I think the question Dustin is if that's council's intent, which I believe it was, what would they what would need to be done to make that explicit? That all of the other regulations for short-term rentals would also apply.
Well, all the regulations apply. I think the clarification was, is it council's intent to cap the C one in this instance? So that would be an added regulation to a C one zone. All the regulations apply. There's no there's nothing we can do to eliminate the licensure or there's no. It's not written to eliminate the licensure. Are you looking to have an additional regulation on middle housing in the C one that caps the number of nightly stays?
So I guess I can speak for me, but on my mind, I would like all of the regulations that a. Unit in the residential zones has to meet would be required to be met in middle housing that's built in the C one.
So that would would be a ninety-day cap. And I thought that was what it did. I thought that's what we were approving last time is that it would be identical to the the R zone.
Yeah, I would suggest a language add that that is more consistent with that. I believe the way I wrote it was it added the residency requirement. It didn't add the cap. So I would I would be very explicit about that in.
Because if you had a residency requirement, you'd have to be there more than six months out of the year, but you could still rent it for five months. If you didn't have the same regulation as the R zone.
Can it just reference the R zone code? You know, shall meet all the requirements of seventeen dot blah blah.
We, yeah, we could. We could definitely make it more explicit, whether it's reference to our code or put those provisions in.
I guess that's what I thought we were doing last time, but if it doesn't seem explicit enough, maybe we should, like you're saying, we should add it.
Dustin, do you have a suggestion for council? I think that would be hopeful.
Yeah, something in the lines of. Middle housing dwellings developed under the provision of the chapter which are located in the C zone shall not be. Well, shall not be licensed as short-term rentals unless they comply with the licensing provision. Is the owner's primary residence and. Does not exceed the number of permitted nights as allowed in the residential zone to certain something, something along those lines. So adding explicitly the ceiling, the residential cap ceiling. And I guess I'd be looking to you all to see if that was acceptable. I think the takeaway was we felt like we were getting in an impasse at the last meeting, but I think there was consensus that. It didn't. There didn't want to be. Council did not want to see a loophole in the C zone. So that's where we came up with this. If you wanted to have, if it's consensus that. It's not only a primary residence, but also the number of nights that that would solve that that language revision would solve that.
Dude, I just want to get consensus with everyone on the change in that language. I think Tim had his thumb up. Jessica had her thumb up. Mark, Megan? Gladys, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, Eric? Eric's okay with that, too. All right. All right. So we do have the new language that Dustin has suggested to make it the same as the R zone. For short-term rentals in the C zone, if you're doing middle housing. Other. Questions? Concerns? All right, this would go. Onto tonight's agenda for a first reading and then Jen would do that first reading. Is that correct, Dustin? We have to do a she would do a roll call vote.
That's correct. I believe we have the recorder here. It's been posted, given that it is an ordinance and change of regulation that that would be appropriate.
Okay. There is a motion on page sixty.
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty sixty-one on tonight's agenda as amended here tonight. Does that work?
I think so. We have the recording of dust, the way Dustin stated that already.
I will second.
Okay, Megan has seconded that. And that would be to go for a. Reading on tonight's agenda. Roll call vote. Jessica?
Hi.
Megan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Eric?
Day.
You were a nay, Eric. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, Tim? Gladys?
Hi.
And chair votes, yes. All right, that will go on to tonight's agenda for a roll call vote from that Jen would do. All right. So next we will do a reading of ordinance twenty sixty-one, missing middle housing for the first time by title only.
Your Honor, entertain a motion for the first reading of ordinance twenty sixty-one by title only.
Megan has made a motion.
One second.
And Jessica has seconded it.
Okay, Councilor Zan Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
Council Haney?
Day.
Council Saunders? Council Coonahan? Council Meadow?
Aye, Your Honor.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty sixty-one and ordinance amended Head River Municipal Code Title Seventeen, Chapter Three, Land Use Stones and Chapter Twenty-Five, Middle Housing Development Standards.
Thank you, Jen. Budget Committee appointment.
This Mayor McBride.
in your packet, we have just one person to reappoint. Dave Beck. We, as outlined in your packet, we advertised in multiple different avenues numerous times over a period of about three months, and unfortunately did not receive any applications for the Budget Committee. But Dave Beck, who has served on the Budget Committee for several terms, has said that he would be amenable to helping us out by going one more year in his position.
Great, that was nice of him to help us out. Um. So I, I, does someone want to recommend him? And then I, I guess I need to appoint him, but does someone want to do a recommendation?
I would recommend Dave Beck for Budget Committee.
Second.
All right, Megan has made a motion, and Erica seconded the recommendation to appoint Dave Beck to the Budget Committee, and I am going to appoint Dave Beck to the Budget Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Um, Arbor Day proclamation. All right, I'm gonna read our Arbor Day proclamation. I think we actually have an Arbor Month as designated by our governor. Whereas in eighteen-seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, absorb carbon dioxide, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of businesses in this area and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they're planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Kate McBride, Mayor of the City of Hood River, Oregon, do hereby proclaim April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one as Arbor Day. In the city of Hood River, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Adopted this the twelfth day of April, two thousand twenty-one. All right, and then I think the only thing, other thing we have is there's a letter of support for a housing, a thirty-unit mixed-use housing project at thirteen oh-six Taylor by Argonaut Investments, and there is an application by this entity to use a small portion of funds for, from the Regional Solutions Revolving Housing Fund. And so this letter is to go to that entity. They have to have a sponsor from the city that they are proposing to put one of these developments in. And so, you know, this is into a river, so they're asking for our support on that. This, and so I would just sign this as a letter of support, and then it would, it would be a recommendation to, I believe, Mid-Columbia Economic Development District, who would be working with the funds. And I've been on the Regional Solutions and the Regional Solutions Revolving House Fund for, for low, it's not all low income, but it's, you know, attainable housing and some low-income housing. And so this is in the process of being, going through the Planning Commission right now. And because we're an appealing body to this, we cannot discuss the what's going on here because in case it came to us later. But we can say we support this in general as a city, what would be happening, and we could send the letter. But we can't discuss the specifics of this proposal at all. Megan?
If I hear off, please tell me not to, but is this the, the revolving loan fund is for like less than a hundred and twenty percent of AMI, or is there, what's the?
Yes.
Okay. Awesome, thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, without speaking to the merits of this application, if we, if we are in the appeal path, can, doesn't it this makes it seem funny that we're saying we're supporting it?
Counselor, Mayor, and Dan, feel free to jump in here. You're supporting the application for funding. It really hasn't, you're not supporting the project or not. You are supporting an application for funding to the loan fund.
See the difference? It's subtle.
Would you like to say it differently? I mean, supporting
No, that may
for funding.
The merits. Yeah.
Merits or any of the, any of the approval criteria associated with this application? Dan, feel free to jump in.
Right, that, it is a subtle distinction, but it's an important distinction. Also, even if the City Council adopts this and someone appeals the decision and brings it to City Council, City Council is the only body on the planet that can resolve an appeal that comes to it. So the mayor is the expert on the rule of necessity, and the whole council would serve as a decision-maker on any such appeal under the rule of necessity, even if someone could say the council had prejudged the land use application, which in my view, looking at this agenda item, it has not.
So if with, with council's approval of me signing this as for the financing has nothing to do with the merits of the application, I will go ahead and sign this.
I'm, I'm always down for bringing outside money to the city, so.
Okay, so Mark is a, let's just go around. I want to just, so people can hear what people are saying. Megan? Are you good?
Yeah, I support.
And Mark?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Eric?
Yeah, you know, I apologize. My computer glitched out, so I was out and then I'm back in. But I definitely am not prejudging the project one way or the other, but I think it's absolutely true that Binstan and Maui Meyer are longstanding, well-known developers who have a successful track record, and they're, they're both very much focused on our community. So I'm very much in support of this letter.
Okay, Tim?
Sounds good.
And Jessica?
I think I'm gonna abstain. I know this is, because this is coming to my agency to ask for funding, so I'm abstaining.
Okay, Gladys?
Yes, I support.
Okay, and I, and I also support it. All right, thank you. Council call. Let's see. I've got just a couple things. Let me to my list here. I think that Energy Council, we had a couple meetings recently, and the Energy Council is gonna try and come with, come up with kind of a way to look at our general policies. Because there's a lot of things moving through the legislature that you don't even know they're gonna be there, and then they come up and like, oh, my God, it's in this form now, and they're gonna have a hearing in three days. And we're like, oh, we really wanna say something about it. We wanna, so we're gonna try and come up with a, a policy list that we can bring to the governing bodies, the City Council, County Commission, to see if we can in general get consensus on certain points that, that we could agree to, that we say, yes, we think that's a good thing. And, you know, maybe it'll be a piece of legislation that we're like, well, we're not sure we like all twenty of those points. But those four, we support. So during the hearing process, we can go forward and say so we can go forward and say that that we would support it. So we're, the, the Energy Council is just, is working on, on that right now. And in the meantime, if there's something that's a key legislative piece, we'll try and get it to City Council to look at, but sometimes, you know, it's just too late. There it's there, and we don't have time to do it. Um. I did a listening session that Rachel and I were both attended. And I'll try and get kind of more of a fuller report on it, and I don't mean Rachel, just a full report on the a fuller report. I do like that. On the listening session that we had, and we, and there was, it was a great listening session. It was about two hours long, and numerous new people were, were giving me their opinions about things, and so it, it was really good. And so I'll, I'll try and write something up and just email it to you just as a general general of what, what went on at that conversation. But Rachel and I just listened really for the, the two hours, and, and I think it, it went really well. So that, that's all I have this evening. Let's see, Jessica?
I was just gonna share, I participated in a, a class at the high school. A friend, Deputy George Economew, asked me to be his Public Safety and First Responders course, and they wanted me to talk about how how citizens can engage with the city in terms of public safety. And so I talked about our work over the last year. And I just, it was a good opportunity to talk about how City Council works and got to explain Robert's Rules of Order, and their questions, how do we make decisions? So anyway, it was a a good opportunity to engage with the students and to talk about all the good things that Rachel and Chief Holstein have been bringing to us.
Great, Megan?
I don't have anything.
Mark?
Two things. One is an update that we're, we're close to having candidate companies to help with the city manager search and, and Kate and Eric and I will be getting together with staff the beginning of next week, I think is when that is. And then the other thing is the last of the Sense of Place lectures for the year is Wednesday night, and it's about how those darn cute little picas survived the fire in two thousand seventeen in the gorge. So that'll, that'll be entertaining, so.
Great. Um, Tim?
Nothing for me tonight. Thanks.
Eric?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Gladys?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor.
All right. We have an executive session, so need to read my script here for that. The City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to Oregon Revised Statutes one nine-two-point-oh-oh-six excuse me, one nine-two-six-six-oh-one-D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. Representatives of the news media and designated staff are allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the Zoom meeting. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made nor final action taken in executive session. The executive session is anticipated to last twenty minutes?
Twenty minutes, Mayor.
Okay, twenty minutes, but may be extended by general announcement to the public. At the end of the executive session, the regular council meeting will, will be adjourned, and the council will not take action. Right.